Forthwith.
And joining us now is the Communications Program Specialist for the United States Postal Service, Larry Dozier. Mr. Dozier, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And of course, we first met more than 20 years ago. It's great to see you again, Larry.
It's great to be here. I was surprised when I walked in and saw you standing there.
Let me ask you a little bit about the Postal Service itself before we get into the commemorative stamps and Tom Bradley. How much mail does the Postal Service handle every year these days?
Well, we process more than 200 billion pieces of mail every year. That equates to about 650 million pieces a day. So, we're a pretty busy organization.
And you've been doing things a little bit differently in the last couple of years. You actually make it easier for people to mail packages and letters. You'll come pick them up.
Absolutely. We have something we call "offensive services," and we are really trying to get people to stop coming to our postal offices. Now, don't be offended by that. We have organizations called "contract postal units," and that's where you have a neighborhood camera shop or stationary store, but they'll also provide postal services. All the things that you can do in the postal service, you can do at a contract postal unit. We also have USPS.com. In fact, an individual or small business person can, right from the computer in the home office, can go to the website, print out labels, print out posters, and then schedule a letter carrier to pick up those packages at no extra charge. So, that's one of the things that we offer these days that we didn't offer in the past.
Well, you just mentioned the website. Worldwide web is certainly now an integral part of the way communications are conducted. How's the post office using the Internet to serve customers?
Well, in addition to, again, the big thing is USPS.com. Once you go to that website, there are all kinds of services and products that you can take advantage of there. Again, print postage, print out labels, calculate what it costs to send your package, find out where postal offices are, ZIP codes, the gambit is there. In fact, we get several hundred thousand hits each day at our website. So, we're using that to enhance the services that we have at the local post office. And again, for many of us, because of the website, we can take advantage of mailing right from home or office and never go down to the brick and mortar station.
How's the popularity and growth of email affected postal services and the actual business, the financial entity that is the postal service?
Actually, it has had a positive and a negative effect, mostly positive. Negative in that it has cut into first-class mail. And, but on the other hand, it's causing an increase in our parcel business. So, we're re-gearing for that. And so, where there's loss on one end, we're making up for it on the other end. And then, of course, all of the extra services that we're able to provide because of the website is just an overall enhancement. It's an advantage for us and for our customers.
Of course, stamps seem to be everywhere these days. Grocery stores, big box stores, the checkout line in my supermarket. What are some of the other locations where postal services might be available?
In fact, you just hit a major one, the checkout line at your supermarket. And again, at our contract postal units. We have them at banks where you can, right at the ATM, get stamps at some of our banks. And locations within the neighborhood, retail stores, retail outlets, and so, and our contract postal units that I mentioned earlier. And in fact, we're all the time looking for more locations to make those stamps and postal products available. Again, it falls under our contract postal unit program. And of course, this is good for the postal service because you don't have to bill other buildings, but it's good for a local business person too because with stamps, it draws people into the store. And again, once they're in there, they consider that as standard product or service.
I am so old-fashioned. I actually get my stamps at the post office. Tax time, of course, is coming. Always seems to be a crunch around the 15th of April. What does the post office do to help with the flow of mail at that time? You must be overwhelmed for a couple of days. What can customers do to ease the crunch of tax time?
Well, we always ask people if you can bring your mail in early and early in the day, especially busy seasons, April 15, and around Christmas. The earlier we get that mail in, the earlier we can process it. And of course, we always have extra employees on hand at certain locations. We tend to extend hours around those times. And of course, several post offices around the Los Angeles basin will open until 12:00 midnight so that those procrastinators can get in there and get their mail-stamped postmarked by April 15.
Since the postmark is so important, tell the truth. Do you actually sometimes postmark things on the 15th when it's after midnight?
Well, if everyone makes it in there by 12:00 midnight, they'll get that letter stamped. And I'll just say, we go above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that it gets the proper stamp if you get it in there around midnight.
Well, that's been my experience as a customer. Glad to hear it. Tell us about your commemorative stamp program now, and particularly some of the memorable Black Heritage stamps.
Well, Bob, today, in fact, on the steps of City Hall, we introduced the Ella Fitzgerald stamp, which is the 30th in our Black Heritage series. This is a most popular series, and I'd just like to discount this. Somehow, it keeps popping up that we're going to discontinue Black Heritage stamps. "Nothing Could Be Further From The Truth" is one of our most popular stamps. And of course, it makes lots of money for us because people collect them and hold them, and when they don't use them, you know, that's money for us. So, again, it's our 30th, today with our 30th issuance with Ella Fitzgerald. But how did these stamps come about? Our program happens in this way. We have a committee called the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee. That's a 15-member committee. They meet four times each year, and they go through the 50,000-plus suggestions and recommendations that we get each year and decide on the 25 or 30 or so that we issue. So, we issue about 25 to 30 commemorative stamps each year. So, that committee is responsible for selecting the stamps and then making a recommendation to the Postmaster General, who has the final say. Now, what they look for in making these decisions, they look for individuals or events that have nationwide appeal, the very popular. And of course, we look at the retail side of it also. We look at the historical and the educational content of a possible stamp, and all of that goes into the selection. And to the extent that one can highlight all of these points that we look for, the better chance of that stamp becoming a reality.
Let's suppose I have an idea for somebody that I think ought to be on a stamp. How do I go about nominating somebody just as a citizen?
The first thing you would do is write a letter to the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee, and they're back in Arlington, Virginia. And again, they would take that suggestion and evaluate it. And they would let you know at some point, one way or the other, whether that stamp is not going to be a reality. Or they'll hold it in abeyance for further information. But that's the first process, writing to the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee with your recommendation.
Now, as I understand it, the rules have changed as to who is eligible to appear on a stamp, and I guess this makes Mayor Bradley possibly eligible.
But they just changed just this year. Up until January 1st, as regards individuals, one had to have been deceased 10 years before even consideration could be made. But Postmaster General Potter signed a new legislation that says that can happen in five years now, and that became effective January 1st of this year. So, it's fortuitous that this idea of Bradley's stamp has come up because, again, with that short of time, it could happen quicker than usual.
Well, certainly you and I have lived under Mayor Bradley, but somebody might be wondering why Tom Bradley, obviously a giant here in Los Angeles, well-known throughout California, ran for governor, but commemorative stamps are issued nationally. Why Tom Bradley?
You're right. Tom Bradley was popular here in Los Angeles, and someone, Congressman Parks, in fact, had the idea to make Tom Bradley a candidate for a commemorative stamp. So, he's got a resolution passed at City Hall, and so, they're going to move forward with making this recommendation. Still, although it's coming from a city council in a large city, it will have to go through the process. The Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee will ultimately wind up with that recommendation, and they will decide to go forward. Again, they'll look at national appeal, they'll look at historical value, they'll look at the educational value. And of course, Tom Bradley, he was popular here in California, but also, he was the first and only mayor in L.A. to have served 20 years. So, that could have some significance there. But again, the Citizen Stamp Advisory Committee will make that final call.
The advisory committee, what sorts of criteria do you suppose they would apply in general and specifically to Mayor Bradley?
Well, in general, again, the individual will have to have been deceased now five years, cannot be strictly religious, cannot have been on a stamp within the past 50 years or so. Again, they'll look at the national appeal. And then, as we were in city council the other day, some of the members talked about Mayor Bradley having entered national appeal. So, that will be looked at. And certainly, the fact that his, the history of his having served 20 years would go into play there. So, all those, and the popularity, would that stamp be a big seller for the postal service? We know that would be the case here in Los Angeles. Would it play well across the country? Perhaps. But again, the city council members here believe that it would, and therefore, they pass that resolution, and they're going to move forward with that.
One last thing before we get to how people can get in touch with you and go to the website. You take suggestions, obviously. Instead of raising the price of first-class stamps, why don't you do like the candy bar industry does, and just make smaller stamps for a while?
Well, we love to do that. We love to keep prices stable from now on, but the truth is, expenses increase with any other business. And we're mandated by law to break even, so we must cover our costs. So, as the cost of the business goes up, then we raise our rates accordingly. And, you know, as stamps go, some of them, they're kind of very sizes, some small, some larger. So, we're doing that already.
Well, the things that are being considered by the Postal Rate Commission, first day of issue, and all things postal, of course, are available several different ways. People can get in touch with the U.S. Postal Service. Tell us about those ways.
We have an 800 number. It's 800-Ask USPS. And by calling that number, one can find information about local post office, about the rates, about calculating the rates, and they can find out about our various services right there on the phone. And of course, for those web savvy individuals, they can go to our website, which is www.usps.com.
Dot com, not dot gov.
Dot com. That is correct. And of course, once they're there, they can, they're virtually in a 24-hour post office once they go to our website. That's the service we call Click and Ship. Again, that's the service that allows customers to go in using a debit or credit card, print out labels, print out postage, then schedule a carrier to pick that mail up, and they never have to leave their homes. The Click and Ship is an excellent service. We'd love for more people to go to our website and give that a try.
Very good. Larry Dozier, spokesman for the U.S. Postal Service. Thanks for coming in and joining us on Council Week in Review.
Jack, thank you for having me.
When council is in session, you can listen to city council meetings as well as committee meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West L.A., dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. For more information, call 311, your one call to City Hall. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 9th, 2007. On behalf of Dave A. Brown, Jr., and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Across this great city, men and women from every background and occupation are coming together, volunteering to help the citizens of Los Angeles. They are the poll workers. They assist voters on Election Day by distributing ballots, answering questions, and opening and closing the polls. They do it not for the $105 stipend, no, but to help others. Become a part of this elite team, The Poll Worker, the next American hero.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, February 13th, 2007. We are here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month, and we, of the week, excuse me, and we are the first Friday of the month in Van Nuys City Hall. We invite members of the public for our meetings to come here and to listen or to testify. All items before the city council receive a public hearing either in committee or in city council. Agendas are available in the back of the room or online at our city's homepage at We also have council ambassadors, who are local high school students in the back who are trained to assist you in the ins and outs of council meetings and to help you read through the agendas. We ask folks to testify if they'd like to for any items that have been agendized for public hearings or for general public comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but not formally on our agenda. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always use the remote facility there and testify from those council chambers, and we're able to watch you here in the John Farrow Council Chambers. Vice versa, when we meet in Van Nuys, you can always show up here in downtown City Hall and testify, and we're able to watch you in Van Nuys. Want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, the city's channel, which broadcasts these meetings live and rebroadcast them taped in the evening. We also are available online, again, at our city's homepage, www.lacity.org, and you can click on the live streaming webcast of our council meetings. And lastly, if you're not close to a computer or television, you can always call in on your phone to the city's audio service called Council Phone and listen to the proceedings of our committee meetings and also of the full council meetings, and that is at 213-621-CITY. We have council members Cardenas, Grul, Labange, Parks, Perry, Rosendale, Smith, Wesson, and Zine here, and we have a quorum. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenell, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, so ordered. Next order of business, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be unanimously approved.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please place your left, your right hand over your heart and repeat with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Next order of business.
Mr. President, you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back to public comment.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 6 are street lighting district ordinances.
Okay. Items 1 through 6 are before us, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call any of them special? We'll open and close the public hearings. There are no cards on those. Why don't we wait and see if we'll have 12 members on those, to hold those on the table? Next items, please.
Item number 7 is also an ordinance. It's regarding fees and its communication from the city attorney, and do you wish to hold that on the desk also?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk as well.
Next items are items 8 through 15, also public hearing items, and the recommendation for council action would be to open the public hearings, continue the hearings and ordinances to March 6.
Okay, colleagues. On those items, if there's no objection, we'll open the public hearings and continue those ordinances to the 6th of March, seeing no objections, so ordered. Next items?
Next items, item 16. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 9, and the recommendation is to grant the application. A motion is required.
All right. Ms. Perry moves that. If there's no objection, nobody wants to be heard on this, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 17 through 31. Item 17 is a commissioner's due. She'll hold that on the desk.
Please, let's hold the commissioner hearing on the desk.
That will leave before Council 18 through 31. And on item number 21, Budget and Finance Committee report has been submitted. It concurs with the HCED committee report. And on 24 and 25, public, excuse me, committee reports have been submitted. And on 31, there are two on the file, however, council can adopt both if they wish.
Let's go ahead and move both of those. Specials, colleagues, 17 through 31.
And, Mr. President, 18 is an ord if you wish to hold that on the desk.
Yes, let's hold that on the desk. I'll hold 24, I mean, I'll call 24 special, please.
I'd like to call 30 special.
30 special for Ms. Han. Other specials, Mr. Smith?
I just wondered, Ms. Perry wanted 21 special. I presume she does.
Yes, let's call 21 special. I think there's a few folks here for that, too. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Sorry, Mr. Parks? 23, Mr. Parks? Mr. Wesson? All right. On the balance, let's hold the ordinance on the desk, 18. And on the balance, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. If there's no objection, let's send 25 forthwith, please.
that I had the great pleasure of serving in the California Assembly with for four years. Uh, we might have had a bumpy start, but I really learned to respect him. He's a doctor, and it's just in his makeup, if there's a problem, he has to try to fix it. He was a person that always had common sense, he was always objective, and it was a, a honor for me to st, to serve with you, and that's my dear friend and former Assemblyman, Dr. Keith Richmond. Keith, stand up and let people give you a welcome to the City Hall, my dear friend, my dear friend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson, and welcome, Mr. Richmond, nice to have you here in chambers. Uh, next items, please?
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 32 through 47, 10 votes are required for consideration, and item number 32 is a commissioner, do you wish to hold that?
Please, and let's hold 33, oh, no, actually, we have 12 members now, so...
And that would leave 33 through, um, 47.
Forty-seven, okay. Do we have any cards on those?
Uh, I don't believe so, on any of those.
I see a few here, uh, let's call 34 special for card, oh, wait, uh, don't see a card there, I'm sorry. Okay, you're correct, we don't have any cards yet on any of those. Uh, specials, colleagues?
Well, they're circulating.
Okay, it's to be circulated, or it has been circulated?
It's currently, right now.
Okay.
It will be.
So, 34 will hold until that is circulated. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none? Let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Um, next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, excuse me, Mr. President, item number 48 is a closed session item.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk for closed session.
And then on the supplemented supplemental agenda, items 49 and 50 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay. Um, on item 49, I assume we'll be calling that special? Um, and item 50, anybody wishing to call that special? Not, I don't see any cards, we'll open and close the public hearing on that. Let's open the roll on 50, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, please.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, if we can take up the ordinances that we held on the desk, now that we have 12 members, I believe it's one through seven...
And 18.
Eighteen, correct. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved as well, there's no objection, we'll, uh, go forthwith on number 18. And, um, we went, did we go forthwith on 21 already? Oh, no, that's been called special, I'm sorry. All right. Um, colleagues, there's been a number of requests to take a, a couple different items out of order, we'll take public hearing, uh, 17 and 31 are commission appointments, which we can, uh, dispense with, sorry, 32, and then, uh, 24, 21, and 49 are the, uh, items that have been asked to go in that order, so if we can, uh, take public comment right now, and we'll start in Van Nuys with, uh, Zuma Dog, two minutes to address the council, welcome.
Eric, can you please hold my time? Uh, the phone here in Van Nuys is broken, and the city clerk, they're, they're still gonna be delivering the cards, the, I just finally got to them through my cellphone. Again, now, not only does the clock not work here, but neither does the phone, so please, um, 39, 43, 49, I'll cut back to just those three and waive the other three I was gonna speak with, but in all seriousness, I know you're a small D Democrat, the phone's not working, bro.
We'll reconsider those two, Mr. Dog, go ahead and give us a second.
Appreciate it, thank you so much, thank you so much, and I'd like the people watching to know that they were flexible and, uh, did, that made a lot of sense. Right now, we'd like to say that Thursday, 4:30, Zuma Dog will be moderating a candidate forum for the candidates of CD14, it's gonna be on Time Warner, 4:30, for the people of CD14, Alvin Paro will be there, uh, John Jay will be there, invitation to Jose Weezer has been given many times to follow up, hopefully he'll be in attendance, if not, Jose, I'll step in for you, bro, and represent your point of view and do your spin, because I want it to be a fair and balanced forum, so tune in, 4:30, Thursday, CD14, the candidate forum, hopefully with Jose Weezer, it's on, y'all, and Jose, y'all better get out there on the streets, they're wondering where you are, y'all. And so, Prop 215, I'd like to say that the Prop 215, I've been doing spot checks of the medical marijuana dispensaries, and I'm here to say they're the safest operations in town, they check your original paperwork, they confirm your doctors, you have to sign in, you gotta show driver's licenses, so that's what's going on there, and thank you to ganjar grocer.com, a medical marijuana dispensary with doctors and clinics and legal advice, that's how I know where to go. Now, let's talk about the mayoral hijacking of LAUSD, y'all, the mayor is trying to hijack the elections of LAUSD by backing his own candidates and financing it with his own private money, and it's shady and unconstitutional, it's against the spirit of the Constitution, and I see I'm running out of time, and all I'd like to say is you gotta vote for John Lorenson to maintain the integrity of the Los Angeles School Board, and vote no on all mayoral-backed candidates.
Thank you, our next speaker is Greg Fuentes, here in council chambers. Greg Fuentes? After that will be Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Uh, good morning, council members. Uh, last week, I addressed this, uh, August legislative, uh, body, uh, regarding some of my concerns about cable television customer service. Um, as I noted then, uh, City of Los Angeles cable operators receive over several hundred million dollars from their customers and...
Can you get a little closer to the mics?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, last year, uh, last week, I noted that cable operators in Los Angeles receive, um, several hundred million dollars a year in franchise fees from their customers. I noted that the city receives 20, I should say, in general fees from their customers, the city receives over 20 million dollars in, uh, franchise fees from their customers. Um, one would think we have great customer service from cable operators in the city, that in fact is not true. Uh, I've noted that Time Warner, uh, notices regarding programming changes have not complied with federal, state, and local law. Last week, I noted in a letter that each of the council offices should have received that annual notices distributed by many cable operators have not complied with state law. Um, I also note today that in going out to Boyle Heights recently, I saw that an economically disadvantaged discount that Time Warner should be providing to, uh, their, their customers is not being, uh, provided in the manner that was negotiated by me and others back in 2000, 2001. I will be providing you a letter regarding this non-compliance. I also ask why it is, if we're paying 20 million dollars a, a year to the city, the city doesn't do a better job of enforcing the customer service standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Our next speaker is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, I would just ask people in council chambers to kindly take their conversations outside of chambers, so we can be as attentive to public comment as possible. There are a lot of conversations, uh, going on, on, no, on both sides of the rope, so if we can please do that and give our speakers courtesy, Ms. Hawkins.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Eric Cassetti. Uh, as of us using our individual private parts, uh, we must at this time stop using all private part at this time to lose weight. Stop now in using, rec, stop now, start now in using regular food for at least 10 years, even though you're...
Uh, Mr. President, I don't believe she's talking about anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. We have to talk about things that the city has jurisdiction over, Ms. Hawkins, so if you can please limit your comments to that.
Is this a subject concerning food? Is this a subject concerning food?
We don't have jurisdiction over that food, I'm sorry. So, we'll have to ask you to address that, or else we'll have to go to the next speaker.
You'll have to be on cable line, concerning, cable line talking?
Why don't, we, we can have you talk to the CLA about that, and we can give you the information, okay? Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, appreciate it. Arnie Corlin is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. Uh, my name is Arnie Corlin, I'm a vice president with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles and chair of our Section 8 Working Group. For three years, I have spent countless hours in meetings and on the phone with owners regards to the difficulties they have working with the Section 8. By Housing Authority's own statistics given to me in early 2006, 17,000 of the 18,000 owners, uh, or vendors at that time had 10 or less units. These are small mom-and-pop owners who rely on this money for retirement or to supplement their income. Many of them are torn with the option of financial hardship, as many have been unable to make mortgage payments or, and who use it on this, uh, who are leaving the program, at the Section 8 program. During this time, I have personally logged over 1,200 complaints from owners. Numerous suggestions and resources have been brought directly to the top management to tackle them, which would help tenants and owners. This includes resources to put together a credit counseling program for tenants. If done, this could be used for the city beyond the Housing Authority. Specific suggestions of how to put together a homeownership program for those tenants that are able, and I believe there are ways for, for a number of tenants to do so with proper mentoring. Offers to bring in business-related resources to help improve the ability to run the program efficiently, effectively, and positively for all. This would also help Hackler's staff as well. This agency with almost a billion dollars should be a resource for tenants, owners, and LA City's economy. AGLA members know the importance of Section 8, I work with many of them, and in doing so, you would see they are amongst the biggest advocates for the program. Many owners absolutely look forward to being able to work with this program again. However, it can only be done upon proper administrative direction. After so much financial hardship has been caused, it will be imperative to show specifically and transparently how these changes will be made. We appeal to the mayor to oversee corrections be made and to this council. Furthermore, I would recommend the mayor direct city controller, audit the agency, and city attorney to verify Hackler's, uh, commission is in compliance with the Brown Act. With the housing and homeless crisis in this city, and the possibility of losing thousands of vouchers, it is imperative, these changes must be made immediately, and I'll give something to the, uh, officer to give to all of you.
Thank you, we appreciate those comments, Arnie. Uh, Chuck Tannen is our next speaker, Mr. Tannen?
Good morning, council members, Chuck Tannen. Uh, want to talk about a front-page article in the Daily News yesterday on condos, vacancy rates not being enforced, more demolitions in 9 and 17. I disliked one of the items in there quoting, knocking out rows of rent-controlled buildings in Valley Village and Sherman Oaks, which includes my street, West Magnolia Boulevard, an entire block to be demolished, with more to come, with condos being triumphant and more housing lost. With regard to the vacancy rate, implementing the 5%, it has yet to be done in 26 years being enforced. So why do we have city laws that are not being enforced? Fear of a city lawsuit, uh, by developers in this case. Uh, as Jane Usher, President of the Planning Commission quoted, "The shame of it, it has not been applied for all those years." Developers in control, and Jane Usher's thoughts to me, if people want something bad enough, you can't stop them, it works just like success, it flies, you fly with it. And the work is not in place and standards are not in place. And Ed Bray has said, his input, "Follow the laws." Jane Usher also gave a thumbs up for passing the 9 and 17 tenant relocation amount, for which many city planners have told me it should have been done a long time ago, yet it's still not done. So come on, city council members, especially Herb and Eric, and, uh, Ed, our mighty three, uh, you guys work hard, we need that success. The 9 and 17 is a start, it's not a solution, the city attorney's office has no objection to it. On, on another note, our city planning is outdated in many areas, including the 1987 parking map congestion and policy for new condos, does not include the San Fernando Valley, we need a motion from, say, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Tannen. Thank you very much, Ms. Tannen. Uh, Michelle Collins is next. Michelle, I think it says Collins? Is it Michelle out there? No? Okay, Morris Griffin?
Mr. President, members of the city council, hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. This is my third visit to the city council, offering an alternative so that we can begin to make our people richer twice a week for the rest of our lives. Here we are in Black History Month, and I am asking that you consider for livable wages for the people who work out at the airport, an ethnic lotto that would guarantee one person from every ethnic race a winner. All we're asking is that you put it on the ballot, that's all we're asking, is that you pass it so that we can begin the process. You were elected, an extra term, so that we can be in a better position in terms of dealing with the problems that we're facing in our city. So here I am, a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush, and all we're saying is that for each and every one of these ethnic races, we would have, uh, the balls to deal with each and every ethnic race. So no one is excluded, everyone is included, and we can use the other half of the winner's money to deal with a supplemental income, a supplemental income that would bring them to a livable wage. Help us, help each other, help ourselves, city council, this is why you were elected. So use your extra terms, use your extra years, show the people that you are looking out for the best interest of them, here in Black History Month. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker, Mr. Weiss?
Mr. President, council members, I, I'm here, uh, as you know, I, I generally speak on behalf of tenants, but today I want to speak, uh, in connection in support of the Apartment Owners Association situation with regard to, uh, this issue with, uh, the Housing Authority, the inability and the ineffectiveness of the Housing Authority to effectively do its job is hurting tenants, and it's hurting the, the Housing Authority people. Um, federal government, from what I understand, is going to, uh, uh, take away the money if it's not used, it's not efficiently used, and like all the other, uh, enforcement mechanisms in the city, um, we got a problem. And somebody on the city council basically has got to step up, uh, in terms of solving that problem, and, uh, I'm, as far as the tenants, uh, are concerned, uh, the tenants that I represent, in any event, I think it's important that we begin to try to, uh, bridge that gap. Secondly, a very important issue that I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to challenge all the council, for the first time in a generation, the Junior Olympics are going to be held in Los Angeles. This is a very important, and I would, and I, and I would ask, um, somebody on this council, basically, Mr. Zine is, is the most obvious one, to organize within each district a youth track and field league right now, because I think it would be terrific, and, and, and Mr. Labange is basically, uh, you know, very yah-yah for this, this kinds of stuff, yes. Basically, every district, and, and Jack Dawson and I, we could work together and form a youth track and field league in every single district, Mr. Zine, and you know what, come July, this city could show well in the Junior Olympics, and I think it would be fantastic for the city, all, you know, all the way, uh, down the line. So I just want to throw that out for everybody's consideration, 'cause we, uh, the city needs some, uh, positive spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Leonardo Wilborn is our next speaker?
Yes.
Leonardo Wilborn?
Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, council chairperson, my name is Leonardo Wilborn. Uh, I just wanted to speak in support of what, uh, Mr. Corlin was saying, I'm also a member of the president's circle for the AGLA Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and for the PAC of the Southern California Apartment Association. Uh, just briefly, a couple examples, working with the Housing Authority the past couple of months has created a situation where, uh, the people who I represent, which are the small ma and pa, property owners, have had to be put in sort of a suspended animation process, where they would enter into an agreement with the Housing Authorities Association, only to be told six, eight weeks, uh, down the line, that the contract amount that they were requesting was not possible. Uh, council people, we really need to look at how this process goes about, for we're asking someone who, who's worked all their lives and invested in rear property, to give up two months of what could be their mortgage payment, to wait for the Housing Authority to come back and say, "We cannot help you, we cannot compensate you at the rate you feel is equitable for this rental property." If we can do that, I believe we can turn the tide and bring more property owners back to the table to work with the Housing Authority. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Don Garza is our next speaker, and Michael Carrion will be after that.
Good morning, city council. You know what, I'm not too happy this morning. Once again, I'm proving once again that general services treats other people more special than others. The other day, I brought a tripod to city council, see this gentleman over here? See this gentleman over here? I brought a tripod to city council, and you know what they told me? You can't set it up. But this gentleman, who's a visitor, is allowed to even cross the velvet rope, and him telling me to be quiet and shut up, because he's more special than I am. Why the heck do combat veterans of the United States Marine Corps continue to be treated more special than others? What is wrong with this city council? Now, today, what I come to talk about is this, number one. There is an L.A. Times columnist, whose name is Steve Lopez. Now, Steve Lopez continues to take credit for cleaning up Skid Row, but let me tell you something. Steve Lopez isn't the only one that's been down there for the past seven years. He wasn't even there when we got a lot of the things done, working with our council offices. He's going to continue to get credit for things that he doesn't have to walk down the streets at night. For instance, I walk with the Neighborhood Watch Walk with the LAPD every Wednesday of the month, every first Wednesday of the month. And on the corner of Wall and Fifth Street, I have been threatened with my life from people selling drugs, selling beer, and selling cigarettes. And that corner continues to be a problem. So while everybody concentrates on San Pedro Street by the Midnight Mission and other places, I continue to have to walk through that mess and continue to have my life threatened, because I dared to clean up my neighborhood, because I was tired of my neighbors getting killed and getting murdered. But the other thing is, why are people like me who live in Central City East, by a USC student over here from the Annenberg School, being treated more, why are they being treated more special than I am? Why is he allowed to cross the velvet rope as a visitor, and that man from General Services not drag him away like as if I did it, they would do it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Garza. Michael Carrion is our next speaker, and then Jim Clark.
Good morning, council. My name is Michael Carrion, and I'm here on the same issue I've been here before on, blight, blight in my community. This is what we have to deal with every day. Can I, Mr. Reyes, I mean, excuse me, Mr. President. Section 28.04, the handbill, says we cannot post these on poles. These are nail-to-trees. These are on public property. These are on the corners. These are on light poles. During the rain, they fall off, and nobody picks them up. The lack of enforcement here is disgusting. These are signs, which are thousands in my community, thousands. They're falling all over the floors. They're damaging our trees, but the city does not enforce the rule. Why? Very simple. It's right here. You guys do the same thing. When you're running for office, you do the same thing. You put your signs up, and they don't, they're not taken down. Once the election is over, there are still signs up there from the mayor running, but nobody wants to come and clean up their mess. But when you guys are sick and tired of somebody else doing it, a little person, oh, you'll put his property into rape. You'll threaten him with building and safety codes. You'll do everything you want, except take care of your own responsibilities and clean up after yourselves. I've been here several times on these issues during every election year, but it seems to go, it seems to fall on deaf ears. Nobody seems to do anything about it, because if you want to change the rules, change the law. Put a stipulation here, except politicians. Politicians are exempt from this. And this is citywide. This is not only in the 14th district. I bring these, because these were all within two blocks from my house. And there are hundreds of them, if not thousands of them, and I didn't have time--
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. And I know Mr. Smith wants to address your comments.
I'm not addressing the comments. Public information, Mr. President. Last year in the budget, ladies and gentlemen, we put two new crews to go out and do inspections and take down illegal signs. As of about three months ago, we had taken down over 300,000 illegal signs and put in effect over a million and a half dollars of fines on people doing that. If anyone finds illegal signs anywhere in the city of L.A., on public property, dial 311 with a location. The city wants to go out and take down those signs and fine the people putting up illegal signs. That's for public information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Clark is our next speaker. Jim Clark is our next speaker. Excuse me, sir. Jim Clark is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and you'll have to bear with me with my voice.
Sure. Just lean in a little bit, and we'll hear you.
Members of the council, I'm here to follow up on what Arnie Corlin was talking about earlier. I'm Jim Clark, manager of government relations for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. We represent about 10,000 apartment owners and 15,000 managers, a total of membership of 25,000. For a number of years, we've been at the table with tenants' advocates to form a coalition called the Save Section 8 Coalition. We want to, or need to, open the eyes of the council, let them know that this program, Section 8, under the direction of the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles, is broken. It is dysfunctional. This good program, which benefits both tenants and landlords, needs to be fixed. Landlords are bailing out of the program, because it's not workable. Tenants are not getting a fair shake and an opportunity to have affordable housing, low-income housing. It is dwindling away. There are vouchers sitting there, unused, at Hackla. Somebody needs to look into this, either through an audit in the comptroller's office or through the HCD committee, which I know Chairman Wesson is very open to the idea of fixing this program, but we need your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. That closes our general public comment. We can go to the agenda and take up our commissioners.
First commissioner is item number 17, and that's confirmation of Mr. Damian J. Martinez to the Relocation Appeals Board, and HCD report has been submitted and distributed to the council.
Mr. Martinez, if you'd like to join us here at the table, and I'd like to recognize Chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson.
I'm looking for--
Mr. Martinez--
Damian.
Mr. Martinez, if you'd like to--
You're on.
Come on and have a seat over here. Thank you.
It's showtime, Mr. Martinez. Anyway, members, we had an opportunity to meet Mr. Martinez today, and I can assure you that his credentials are impeccable. It is, I think, in the city's best interests to unanimously confirm his appointment. Once you hear him speak for a while, you'll find out about his background, his commitment to serve, and again, he's my size, height-wise, so that alone is reason enough for him to be confirmed, that he'll be part of my short brigade. Anyway, with that, Mr. President, I would like to allow Mr. Martinez to speak to us briefly.
Mr. Martinez.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Wesson, for letting me know I'm on the shortlist here in the city. It's a great honor to be here today. I wanted to express my interest in helping the community. I am a former federal prosecutor. During those nearly five years of experiences, I had the opportunity to prosecute major narcotics offenses here in the central district, which is the five counties of Southern California. Also, during those five years, I volunteered time to assist in indigent families adopting, fostering, foster children. I was able to provide bilingual assistance to them, and on the day that everything was finalized, it was a very joyful experience, and I was very happy to assist in the community. Before that time, I was a law clerk to now the California Supreme Court Justice Carlos R. Moreno, and at that time, I was clerking for him while he was across the street at the district court. That was a great experience. It was also a time where I was able to share my interest in the community and try to better everyone around it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. And, Mr. Wesson, any, we're good to go? Okay. Well, with that, let's open the roll, and then, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah. Tell me what you see the appeals board doing. Why are you going on this board, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Thank you. One of the central rights everyone has is property rights, and it's essential that the government, the local government, afford people due process. And I believe that my background has put me in a position where I can have balanced and reasonable opinions on things and afford people the due process they deserve.
And in this due process, what are the options that a person has when they go before the appeals board, especially somebody watching this on TV, doesn't even know what it's about? Explain what the board is and what its role is.
As I understand it, when the government decides that a property is going to be converted to a different kind of use, existing occupants of the property may have to be moved to a different location. That can be difficult for the existing occupants, and they want to see what kind of rights they can get, and it's up to the board to hear their interests and to determine whether the decision of moving them should be overridden, or whether, despite their interests and despite the effects that it may have and any hardships, it would be best for the community as a whole that the occupants of the property be moved.
Does it have anything to do with condo conversion issues?
I believe it's possible that condo conversion, if there is an existing, for example, in the West Side, I know that there's some industrial, light industrial properties that may be converted to condominiums, it's possible, and that the people who then, who are now occupying the light industrial would be affected by any decisions of the city's relocation decisions.
What about an apartment dweller? Would they be impacted if somebody came in and wanted to change it from apartments to condos? Would you get involved in that end of it?
Well, I'm at the appellate, if I am appointed, I would be at the appellate end of the process. And yes, if it reached the appellate board, I would be one of the members who would have some judgment in how these people were affected.
Because in my district, I just love a reaction from you. Half of my constituents are renters. All of them are threatened by condo conversion right now, and if their building gets converted to a condo, they'll never find a rental unit of comparable value in the 11th district, which is the ocean district, the coast. How would you react to that, and what do you think we need to do to preserve a middle class, a working class, and all levels of society in my district?
Well, it's definitely important that city occupants and the residents of the city have a place to live and that they're not spending hours and hours on the freeway.
So you'd be sympathetic to supporting tenants' rights within the context of areas where condos are potentially going to displace them?
I think the hardships on families especially is something that I am very sympathetic about. You know, single people can move more easily, but families who've lived in an area for a really long time and have their children in schools that, you know, they don't want to be moved out of, that is something that I'm very sympathetic to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Let's open the roll and the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 32, and that's confirmation of Mr. Archie Quincy to the Board of Animal Services Commissioners.
Mr. Quincy, if you'd like to come forward, I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Weiss, for the Commissioner for the Animal Services. That came through your committee? You're good? Okay. Would you like to share anything with the council in terms of your desire to serve? And congratulations on your nomination.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you, Mr.--
Could you bring the microphone a little closer to you? Thank you.
I say, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you, Mr. Wesson, and I too am a member of your short committee. That's enough. I have a long history of animal services within the County of Los Angeles. I spent approximately 29 years with the County of Los Angeles, and during that 29 years, I think we instituted quite a few programs which were beneficial to the county and also can be beneficial to the city, such as your spay and neutering programs with the city, I understand, wants to get down to a zero population of spay and neutering, which I think is possible with, on certain conditions. I had the privilege of opening up the first spay and neuter clinic in the County of Los Angeles, and since then, I saw to it that we built six, five more, excuse me, five more spay and neuter programs within the County of Los Angeles. I think I have a very good background that I can be of valuable service to the commission and to the City Department of Animal Services. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may--
Mr. Wesson?
We will rarely find an individual with this level of experience. This is a perfect appointment, so I urge a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Zein is next on the queue.
Thank you. I joined my colleagues in that, having the interview and learning your experience and your dedication to the interest of animal welfare, animal care, and your extensive experience with the County of Los Angeles, well-qualified for this position on the commission. So qualified, you could be running the entire department, which you have vast experience. So I commend you on that and your dedication to help with this endeavor. And as we discussed, some of the animal rights folks aren't real happy with what Animal Services seems to do, and I know they're trying to change that and help the animal rights folks understand the compassion, the concern for the animals. So welcome to this commission. We discussed some of the issues that have come up in the past, and hopefully, your addition to this commission will help relieve some of the anxiety and frustration that exists with some people with our Animal Services Department. So I welcome you to this, after your extensive, extensive career in caring for animals for many, many years with the County of Los Angeles, and innovative programs that you brought about. So welcome aboard.
Thank you, and I'll do my best for you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. It's now time to vote on our appointee. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 ayes. That item has been approved. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I think we're going to take item number 24 next, and I'd like to acknowledge our present, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd move that we just, I know we have one speaker card, if we could reopen public comment on 24, please.
Seeing no objection, we'll open the public comment. Mr. Rick Jacobs.
Madam President, Mr. Garcetti, this resolution calls for moving forward the California primary from June 3rd to February 5th. It's a resolution in support of bills that are now circulating in the Assembly and the Senate. Los Angeles city itself has more residents than the states of Iowa and New Hampshire combined, yet traditionally Iowa and New Hampshire decide for the rest of the country who's going to be president. On the other hand, California is the home of silk pillowcase fundraisers, where these candidates swoop in, take $2,300 at a throw, or $46,000 if you can raise it, and then leave. This resolution helps to strengthen the hand of the Assembly, the Senate, and the governor to say it's time for California to force the candidates to pay attention to the issues of a state that is the most diverse in the country and that really best represents the issues that are before all of the American people. So on behalf of the Courage Campaign, where we've had a petition drive, where we've successfully pushed to support this, we hope that the city council will endorse this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, very much. Mr. Garcetti, and then be followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Jacobs--
Mr. Garcetti, before you speak, we do still have a lot of noise in this chamber. If we could ask everyone to please, if you have conversations, to take them outside. Shh, so we can hear speakers. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate that. And again, I want to thank Rick Jacobs and the Courage Campaign and all the folks who have gotten behind this. No matter what your party is, whether you want to be voting for Chuck Hagel, Mitt Romney, John McCain, Barack Obama, Hillary Clinton, John Edwards, we can't have a say. Dennis Kucinich, Mr. Rosendahl, no matter who it is, we don't have a say here in California. California is an important state for primaries in presidential campaigns, but only primarily because we raise money and because we're a media center. We've been referred to as the ATM of the presidential campaigns. Here in California, where we have a representative population, especially as you look at communities of color, as you look at urban centers, as you look at a diverse population, we have traditionally been shut out of having a voice, an equal voice, to our fellow citizens that live in New Hampshire, in Iowa, now in Nevada, and South Carolina. And there is something important that goes on in those smaller states, and this certainly doesn't displace that. But after those four states are able to chime in and have those one-on-one conversations with candidates, we say here in California, more Californians should have that very same opportunity, not just to have to pay $2,300 if somebody can afford that, to perhaps see a presidential candidate, but to actually have presidential candidates come and speak to us face-to-face and tell us why they want to lead our country. Moving our presidential primary to February would give us that opportunity, and the time for this has come. We know that there is a chicken and egg, that if we move ours up, other states want to move up, but we are well-positioned this time for 2008 to be the dominant, large voice after those first four states, along with some other states on that same day in February, which would mean we would get attention for the next year, we would get the choice-- And the time for this has come. We know that there is a chicken and egg, that if we move ours up, other states want to move up. But we are well positioned this time for 2008 to be the dominant large voice after those first four states, along with some other states on that same day in February, which would mean we would get attention for the next year, we would get the choice and the input that most other citizens do in those smaller states. And as the largest state in the Union, not only do we deserve that, we have earned that. So I hope that we can all get behind this and encourage our state legislature. I know both the Governor and the Speaker are excited about this idea, and it is something whose time has come here. And certainly, as the largest city in the largest state, our voice will be very powerful in giving momentum to this idea and truly empowering us, not just as the ATM of politics, but as the place where grassroots politics and American politics can change. So I urge your support today, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Indeed, Mr. President, this is indeed a great opportunity for California. Many of you know, when I did my television show, I had all the presidential candidates come by my studio, but they either came to my studio or to some beautiful home in Brentwood or the Palisades for money. And we, with 36 million people, have been totally ignored in this presidential politics. By bringing it to the 5th of February 2008, we will truly be part of the mix. Our big transportation infrastructure needs, our tremendous housing needs, our social welfare needs, our climate change needs, all of the issues we in California care about, we now can look at these presidential candidates up close and personal and ask them where they stand on the great state of California. We donate $50 billion more to Washington every year than we get back in services. It's time our infrastructure was taken care of like the small states are across the nation. We have not gotten our fair share of federal dollars. By a presidential candidate having to sell him or herself to our people in California will truly be empowered like we haven't been before. It's absolutely the right thing to do. All the stars are lined up. They're starting to open up headquarters in the state, all the candidates, and we'll get a chance to actually mix and mingle with the national and international issues that we have been absolutely, you know, not involved in in the past. So it's a great thing, and I want to thank everybody for putting this together. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. And just to add, my comments, I fully support this. You know, all too often, people only come to visit us in the city of Los Angeles, candidates to raise money and nothing else. And I think this gives us a great opportunity to be part of a national debate about the next president of the United States and others, so I support it as well. So Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes. That item's been approved. Thank you. Fourth with. Thank you. Next item, I believe, is the Grand Avenue item. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President, item number 21, and there is an HCD report, Budget and Finance Report, and they both concur.
They both concur. We do have public speaker cards on that item. Hearing, I know that there is an interest to open public hearing, unless there is any dissension on that, we will open a public hearing. So I'd like to ask Eli Brode to be our first speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. The Grand Avenue Committee and the Joint Powers Authority of City and County are pleased to recommend final approval of the Grand Avenue project. Today's a historic day. It was more than six years ago that the Grand Avenue Committee was formed, with representatives of the city, the county, the Cardinal, the Music Center, and other constituents close to Grand Avenue. It was three years ago that the Joint Powers Authority between the city and county was formed. And it was May of 2005 that the City Council and the Board of Supervisors approved the implementation plan. And along the way, I must say, we've had unprecedented cooperation between the city and county. I want to thank Jan Perry. I want to thank Jerry Miller, Bud Overham, the Mayor, and others that have been so cooperative in making all this happen. I want to also thank my co-chairs, Antonia Hernandez, Nelson Rising, who've been more than helpful to me and the process. We believe that this project is a win-win for everybody. First of all, the developers paying the city and county over $148 million plus some incentive rents against an appraisal of $143 million. The developer, the related companies, was selected after interviewing 10 national developers. I'm delighted that they chose Frank Gehry to be the architect of Phase One of the project, which includes a 116-acre park from City Hall to Music Center, 500. Madam Chair, could I have two more minutes?
I'll just turn Ms. Perry. Fine, thank you.
It'll include 500 affordable housing units, 2,000 other housing units, a five-star hotel, 400,000 square feet of retail, including bookstores, restaurants, a market, et cetera. According to L.A. Economic Development Corporation, we're going to have 29,000 jobs during the construction throughout our region from this project. After the project's completed, we're going to have 5,900 ongoing jobs, $615 million of annual and indirect business revenues, and tax revenues of $109 million a year. But just as important of all of that is the community labor and business support that the project's received, and many people are here to speak about that. A number of local groups formed the Grand Avenue Community Benefits Coalition, attract the project, and they're now in total support of the project. That coalition includes the Los Angeles Community Action Network, Strategic Actions for a Just Economy, Concerned Citizens of South Los Angeles, Community and Economic Development Department of L.A. Trade Tech. Supporters of the coalition include SCIU Local 1877, St. John's Well Child and Family Center, Esperanza Community Housing Corporation, L.A. Coalition End Hunger and Homelessness, Little Tokyo Service Center, Livable Places, Beyond Equity, and many others, including Central Cities Association, the Music Center, City Neighborhood Councils, Downtown Neighborhood Hall, and Union Support. Related has signed an agreement, neutrality agreement with Here Local 11. Agreements are almost complete with the SCIU regarding collective barn agreements for maintenance and security. Project labor agreements are nearly complete with the Building Trades and the Carpenters Union. And amongst the things that were negotiated with the developer were affordability levels for affordable housing, onsite affordable housing, lower than that required by the JPA. The developer agreed to contribute $500,000 toward a job training program. The CRA agreed to match the developers' $500,000 and will match an additional $850,000 contributed by any source, whether it be the city, the developer, or the county. The developers committed $1.5 million as a pre-development revolving loan fund for the creation of permanent supportive housing for the homeless. CRA will establish a community oversight and enforcement committee that will meet quarterly and review the status of the project in meeting all the community benefits. So I'm very proud to present this project to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brode. We appreciate your testimony today. Just as a reminder, we did have a public hearing in committee, so this is by motion that Ms. Perry has reopened the hearing, so we will have some flexibility on it. But we've had a request for 10 minutes of public comment total. So Russell Brown will be our next speaker, then we'll have Christopher Sutton, and after that will be Marilena Durazo.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti and Councilmembers. My name is Russell Brown. I'm President of Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council. I'm also Chair of Residents Association of Downtown L.A. and Co-Chair of Historic Core Neighborhood Block Grant. We enthusiastically support this project. Related Group has worked with the community for many years. When Related Group was brought in, they were brought in because they had a proven track record. One of the instrumental parts of this was a community wanted an iconic location, and they brought in the design team of Frank Gehry. This project also includes neighborhood-serving retail, affordable housing, onsite, living wages, permanent, and construction jobs. It ideally brings high density in an urban transit corridor right next to the subway station. They have done outreach all over the city, including asking not only what does this project mean to downtown, but how can downtown be a place for everybody? It also has a 16-acre urban park that in the future will be a site for signature events that the city will see, that people will see in the city all over the world. We appreciate this event, this project, and we look very much forward to having a great partner in downtown. Thanks.
Thank you. Christopher Sutton is our next speaker.
My name is Christopher Sutton. I'm the attorney for the Western Bonaventure Hotel, who opposes this project and will litigate and take referendum petitions if necessary. I have copies of a letter I submitted earlier to the City Clerk's office, and I will simply summarize the headings in this letter. Number one, violation of the Oversight Ordinance and the Redevelopment Law under which the Oversight Ordinance was adopted. Number two, the requirements of a public hearing noticed at the City Council by Redevelopment Law has been violated, not at a committee. Redevelopment Law does not allow you to delegate that duty to a committee. Three, violation of the 1974 and '75 development agreements with the Bonaventure banning further hotel development in Bunker Hill. Violation of the Redevelopment Plan for Bunker Hill, which bans these land uses, which bans excessive housing development, which bans an FAR exceeding the numbers that you're allowing here that have already been exceeded. Number five, and this is an improper attempt to amend the Bunker Hill Redevelopment Plan without going through the amendment process. Number six, the subsidies that are for this luxury hotel and luxury condominiums, the millions of dollars, are unneeded and based upon a fraudulent study. The proposed SEQA findings ignore the severe parking impacts upon adjoining government buildings, particularly the Superior Court, and there is no phasing that addresses the Superior Court parking problems. Violation of the city charter's anti-private subsidy provisions for a hotel. The violation of Proposition 218 was, in effect, you're shifting the cost of this subsidized hotel to all the other hotels in the city by giving back taxes to this hotel the other hotels do not receive back. Local services will be sacrificed in order to subsidize this hotel. The data used in the study was fraudulent. There's a conflict of interest, that the Council is not sitting as a local matter, but sitting as a state agency under Redevelopment Law. Under Government Code 84308, the Council members who have received certain campaign contributions are disqualified. I'll submit this for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, I'd like to invite Marilena Durazo, and I know she wanted to be joined with Kevin Norton, Esperanza Valdivia, Maribel Barrenechea, Tom Walsh, and Terry Martin.
Good morning, City Councilmembers. My name is Marilena Durazo of the Los Angeles Federation of Labor, and on behalf of almost 300 unions in Los Angeles County, unions that represent over 800,000 workers in the county, I am here to express our fullest support for the Grand Avenue project. We're here also to thank and congratulate Supervisor Gloria Molina and City Councilwoman Jan Perry and the related companies for the role, the leadership role that they have played. There is nothing more important than to have a project that benefits the community in its entirety and a project that will also move Los Angeles forward as a major city in this nation. A project that has affordable housing, a project that has permanent supportive housing, a project that has job creation, both for temporary jobs in construction industry, which are good middle-class jobs, permanent jobs which will also be either union or at least will be paid the city, Los Angeles City Living Wage. These are the kinds of things with local hiring for the construction jobs, for the permanent jobs, for job training, revenue and assistance, first-source hiring, park and open space, public art. This is truly the kind of project that Los Angeles should be proud of. It's the kind of project that's not going to be a trickle-down and let's see who at the bottom benefits, but it's going to ensure that workers, hard-working families who pay taxes, we want, we want an investment that's going to support working families as well as all others who are investing. So we're here to support it. I want to thank everyone who was involved in it, and again, express our fullest support for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, on behalf of all the Building Trades, we're fully in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning. Tom Walsh, Secretary Treasurer of Unite Here Local 11, representing hotel workers, and I'm being joined with Maribel and Esperanza, two long-term hotel workers in a downtown hotel. This project is a major step forward for the continued revitalization of downtown. Related has signed a labor peace agreement with our union for the hotel portion of this project. This will mean that the creation of hundreds of permanent union jobs, jobs with family health care, pensions, and good pay. Related Companies is to be applauded for this. The unionization of hotel jobs being created by this project is a model of what labor-management cooperation can yield, jobs that strengthen communities and help build a new middle class in Los Angeles. And for this reason, we urge your approval.
Hi, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maribel Barrenechea. In Esperanza Valdivia, we are housekeepers in the Bonaventure. I have been working for 10 years, she is working for like 11 years. Also, we are single mothers, and I support this project because we needed this kind of jobs in the city where they provide a good wages and health benefits, because I believe, we believe that's good for us and good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Terry Martin. I'm a business representative for United Association Steam Refrigeration, Air Conditioning, Pipe Fitters, Local 250, Los Angeles. Our membership includes 5,000, but our District Council, 16 Southern California Pipe Trades, we have 20,000 members. This project, and any project that has a developer that's willing to use local contractors, signatory contractors to a union contract, that will provide true apprenticeship programs, that will provide a livable wage, a middle-class wage, as Marilena Durazo stated. Currently, with the work going on in L.A., we're looking at a 10% increase on the apprenticeship program. And with this project, while we're looking at the item in that states we use local residents, well, we do have a minimum standard. You must have a GED or high school diploma to get in the trade, just like you would a fire department or police department. So for those in the audience that aren't familiar with the Building Trades, Brother Richard Schlossen, the Secretary Treasurer, he was unable to speak today, but he represents our Building Trades, and we're in full support of this project. We thank you very much, and looking forward to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Perez Becker is our next speaker, and then Gary Tobin.
I'm Veronica Perez Becker from the Vice President of Legislative Affairs for the Central City Association. CCA and the Downtown Center bid are proud to stand in support of the Grand Avenue project and the related companies, a world-class developer who has designed a world-class project having regional, if not international, significance. This project will transform Grand Avenue into a first-class destination worthy of the cultural institutions it houses, such as the Walt Disney Concert Hall, the Colburn School for Performing Arts, and the Museum of Contemporary Art. In addition, the project, representing over $2 billion of private investment, will provide tremendous public benefits, such as a 16-acre park, thousands of jobs, and hundreds of units of affordable and market-rate housing. We strongly urge you to approve the project and the proposed tax rebates that are critical to its success. The rebates would not come out of the general fund, but would, from net new revenues that would not exist but for the project, which includes the Five Star Mandarin Oriental Hotel. The project will bring in over $109 million in annual tax revenue for the city and $615 million in direct and indirect business revenue. The downtown community celebrates this vision and hopes you will quickly approve and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Tobin is our next speaker.
I'm Gary Tobin, President of the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce, and just like to add our voice to the support for this project. This project, along with L.A. Live, the Universal City, the projects you broke ground for yesterday at the MTA in Hollywood, are all significant redevelopment projects in our community and signal a surge in economic activity that all of us can be proud of. I urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. We're now over the 10 minutes. I want to read these other names into the record that are here. Mark Williams, Brady Westwater, Pete White, Zuma Dogg, and Don Garza. If there's no movement to extend, then those will be entered into the record. Ms. Perry.
Oh, wait a second.
As I mentioned, we had a public hearing in committee. As I mentioned, we had a public hearing in committee, and there were 10 minutes moved, and we're at the end of 10 minutes. It requires a motion to extend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today is a culmination of many, many years of work. As you may know, I sit on a joint powers authority with Supervisor Molina, City Representative Bud Overham, who was a former deputy administrator of the Redevelopment Agency, and now with the mayor's office, and the CAO for the County of Los Angeles, who I believe is still on the job, David Jansen. We deliberated openly, we deliberated completely and thoroughly throughout this process, and we worked with a developer who made sincere and committed efforts to reach out all over the city. And while this project is based in downtown Los Angeles, the developer made a commitment early on and followed through on that commitment to reach out south into Janus Hans district, out into the San Fernando Valley, into the mid-cities, into South Los Angeles, into East Los Angeles. So today is the culmination of that. Previous speakers in the CLA will also come to the table and talk in greater detail about the revolving loan fund, which was created with the assent of the developer, partnership with the Redevelopment Agency, to provide an opportunity to nonprofits who engage in job readiness training, job preparation training, to be able to bring in those people who are at risk, those people who are disadvantaged, formerly homeless, people who face great challenges in their background, so that they may partake of the richness that this project has to offer. In addition, the affordable housing, and again, the CLA can speak in greater detail on that, will be on-site. This is highly unusual, to put affordable housing on-site with market-rate housing. And the level of AMI for those who will be on-site is, I believe, unprecedented in the city of Los Angeles. I also want to highlight the fact that our relationship and partnership with the County of Los Angeles is also unprecedented. And many times, we are in conflict, but on this, we were in agreement, and we have tracked side by side, even today, the County of Los Angeles will take this matter up at the supervisor's meeting, I believe about 1 o'clock today. So we made sure that we never got too far apart from each other, never moved forward until each side was comfortable, and that their questions and concerns had been addressed and had been answered. So with that, I want to say that this is about jobs, housing at all income levels on-site, a tremendous amount of open space for the entire city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank Supervisor Molina and all the great civic leaders who are represented here today for being steadfast. I would also like to thank the collaboration of nonprofits who held firm on advocating on behalf of their clients as well, to make sure that no one was left behind, and also recognize the Related Company for their efforts in doing outreach and being responsive to the concerns raised throughout the nearly two-year public hearing process. Now, there is one issue that I want Mr. Miller to address in just a second, and I want to make sure that he highlights that in Phase 1, the 100 units of low-income housing, 35 of those will be at the 35% area median income, and the other 65 units will be at the 50% area medium income. And so it's important to note that this project will serve people who are lower income and will provide a good template, perhaps a model, by integrating affordable units into market-rate development. I think it's important to note that this is going to provide a 16-acre park for the city. We talk about we want more green space. Here's an opportunity to do that. Now, the funds that the city is proposing to, and I choose this term very carefully, reinvest, are generated from the project itself. And I wanted Mr. Miller to highlight that upfront, because I know we've all read a lot in the media, and while most of it's generally been positive, I want to clarify for the record how this project is being paid for, and Mr. Miller, if you would, explain how the park will be paid for. Hold my time.
Okay. Well, Ms. Perry, you brought up several issues. Yes, you are absolutely correct. The affordable housing is being incorporated into this development. As you're aware, it's something that cities tried very hard to do in the last number of years, is rather than segregating out or separating, you know, the affordable, very affordable live-work units from the higher-end units, there's an effort to incorporate those to make sure that all of those individuals have the same sort of benefits and opportunities with the housing. So those are incorporated into the project itself. Relative to hiring and job training and et cetera, there is funds being provided by the developer and the CRA for outreach. There's a very strong local hiring program, both during construction and permanently, and those are incorporated into the community benefits package. Now, relative to financing of the project, this is coming from net new revenue generated by the project itself. In essence, when we approach, or when I approach these types of projects, there are two essential questions that have to be answered. The first is, is this net new money, or is the general fund potentially at risk? And the second question is, is this public reinvestment necessary to make the project feasible? Unless the answer to both of those questions is yes, there's really no point in proceeding with the discussions. In this case, the answers to both of those questions are, in fact, yes, this is all net new money, and then we get into the issues of what the city gets from it, and that does include the community benefits, it does include the affordable housing. In this instance, it also includes the revenues that are not being reinvested into the project, again, net new revenues. The business tax, the sales tax, the utility tax, all of that would be retained by the city. Additionally, the Bunker Hill redevelopment area terminates in 2012, and after that, the additional property tax will also flow to the city. So, as in keeping with the projects that you've approved in the past, including Hollywood Highland, Staples, the Convention Center Hotel, Marlton Square, Chesterfield Square, they are not getting all of their revenues. Some of the revenues are being retained by the city to provide services.
So, if this project moves forward, is it taking away funding from other projects?
It is not. In fact, it is generating additional funding for city services.
Would the funds exist, or the revenue exist, without the project?
They would not.
And you just mentioned that the Bunker Hill Trust will expire in 2012. So, if you capture this money, say, on-site, basically, this goes to the benefit of what? The benefit of employment, sales tax, where does it, where does it go?
Well, again, capturing the money and reinvesting, a portion of the money on-site makes the project feasible. We've had a consultant that looked at the project and found that without this reinvestment, it is infeasible for the project to proceed. Now, addition, what is, what we do not bring to you, because it is somewhat speculative, is the multiplier effect. And you've seen that in South Park with Staples, you've seen that in Hollywood. What is not in this equation is the additional investment and property taxes and jobs and other economic activity that is a result of this catalytic development. So that is a direct result of reinvesting the money on-site for the project, and then subsequently, as I said, even with this project, you know, half the revenues that's being generated over the 20-year period are retained by the city for services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it very much. It's a wonderful moment to see organized labor, the business community, the nonprofit community, and folks who live in the area all together on one issue. This is exactly what we should be having in everything we do. And I look forward to that in the living weight for the Century Corridor later in the discussion, when we go to that issue as well. We all win by this project, folks, for the obvious reasons, that all mixes of society will be able to live there and will continue to develop downtown as it needs to be developed. I received a letter this morning from Charles Linder, an attorney, talking about people with disabilities and being exposed to how do they get to and from their job, and accessible path of travel. Mr. Miller, you have a copy of that. I've spoken to Mr. Brode about it, and Eli said that he will replace the parking, and he'll work with the community so that as the project goes forward, people with disability will be preserved. That letter there states the issues there, and we'd like to have that read into the record, and I'd like a quick reaction from you of how we will monitor this to make sure people with disabilities and their rights are preserved.
Well, certainly, as we go forward, CRA will be deeply involved in monitoring the contract and making sure everything is complied with. Again, I think the letter you're referring to principally addresses disabled access and other issues with the parking and the criminal courts building, et cetera. And again, I have read it this morning. I can assure you that we will make sure to stay on top of this, and I know the developer's willing to work on it as well. As a matter of law, certainly, the new construction and the new parking that's being built is going to have to comply with disabled access requirements. So we will certainly make sure that those issues are taken care of.
Thank you very much for that. This is a great project, and I obviously will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zein is our next speaker.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Jan Perry for the hard work she's done on this project. I know her heart and soul's been put in this for a long, long time. Wherever she, there she is, Jan Perry. Congratulations to you for the fine job. You mentioned housing, critical need in the city of Los Angeles for that. This addresses the issue of housing jobs, construction jobs, and the follow-up jobs after that. The tax base, the tax base will generate revenue for the city of Los Angeles that we don't receive now. Because the tax base that is generated there now is how much? Where's it going? Or is it not?
Currently, currently, the, I believe, the only thing that's being generated at this moment is parking.
That's it.
On this particular property, yes. So...
So the tax base will increase, tremendous increase, in the revenues to the city?
Absolutely.
And people ask in the San Fernando Valley, how will this impact the San Fernando Valley? How will this impact the taxpayers in the San Fernando Valley? It's not going to cost them any money, number one.
Number one, it will not cost them any money. Number two, it will...
It won't take away services.
It will not take away services.
Okay. How will it benefit?
It will generate additional funding for the general fund, that, again, is up to the council and the mayor on how to allocate that funding, and obviously, the valley is a big participant in the general fund. I would also say additionally, as we've started to use this in various parts of the city, you recently approved a project in Chinatown, we've done it downtown, we've done it in South Los Angeles. I fully expect there are opportunities in the valley to use the same sort of methodology of helping to spur economic development and focusing on some catalytic projects that are generating net new revenue that can be used to foster this sort of economic development in the valley as well.
So when we have more money in the general fund, that's more money that we can utilize for services throughout the city of Los Angeles, whether it be the police services, the recs and parks services, after-school programs, whatever the case may be.
Yes, exactly.
Is there any estimation of how much, when the project's complete, excluding the hotel bed tax and the parking revenue, is there any estimation in taxes that the city will benefit, the sales tax benefit and the property tax benefit? Any estimation on that?
Well, over the 20-year period, again, it's about half would be reinvested and half would be retained by the city. So in present value dollars, it would be about $66 million. But then beyond, again, the 20 years, when nothing is flowing into the development and all of it's being retained, it would be substantially more than that.
That's the hotel bed tax and the parking tax.
Exactly.
And you mentioned Bunker Hill, when that's going to expire in 2012.
2012, right.
And that additional revenue will then come back to the general fund.
Yeah, the property tax would then come to the general fund.
Which is tremendous amount of money.
Yes.
So the valley will benefit in the short term by jobs, will benefit in the long term by additional revenues in the general fund, which then, the mayor's through the budget and the council, through the ironing out of that budget, will generate an additional services and benefits to the people, not only the valley, but to all parts of Los Angeles.
Exactly. In essence, there's really no downside from a revenue standpoint, and potential and significant upside from a revenue standpoint, and all of those other issues you mentioned, the jobs creation, the affordable housing, et cetera.
So there is a major public benefit to this environment in downtown Los Angeles on Grand Avenue?
Absolutely.
So the title of grand project with grand results awaits us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. A couple of questions for our chief legislative analyst as well, because I think there's always legitimate questions that are raised about projects like this, and at first blush, for many of us who don't come from a development background or a land use or a government background, you see something like this, you see the amount of public money put in, and you see that there is somebody who is a for-profit entity, and at first blush, we scratch our heads and wonder why is public money being used for this. But I want you to dig deeper a little bit into some of the areas of the city where we have done this and what sort of effect it's had. The first Staples project, I know there was some controversy around this, and there wasn't necessarily the package of community benefits that we had. In LA Live, the second round, though, this was a very similar process, where there's public money that's being generated from the area that's making this possible around the Convention Center. You mentioned Chinatown. We have some money yesterday in the Hollywood and Vine project that we broke ground on. Why is it that sometimes, in your opinion, and this is an opinion, some of these things generate a lot of publicity and controversy, and other times, they don't? If you could hold my time, please.
I think primarily, it, I think it goes to the size of the project. I mean, the bigger money, the more the attention. But the concept is exactly the same. As I indicated, we've done very catalytic, but smaller projects in South Los Angeles, such as Chesterfield Square and Marlton Square. The same concept of generating money and reinvesting that in these projects to make those happen, which then spurs additional economic development in the area without any public subsidies. That really is, is the idea, is to identify catalytic projects that bring economic development with them. So I think the attention primarily goes to the size, the size of the project and the size of the dollars.
In your opinion, well, how many years have we been in debt at the Convention Center?
Oh, since the 60s.
And how long have people tried to build a hotel to help that Convention Center be a more attractive destination?
I think hotels have been permitted down there, entitled down there, probably since the 60s. When we expanded the Convention Center in the late 80s, or in the mid-80s, I believe, more hotels were entitled, and it, quite frankly, is still a drain of about $30 million a year on the city budget because we haven't been able to get a hotel done. So...
This is the first year the Convention Center will be in the black? Is that true? If you look at the year, I mean, we have an overall debt, but this is the first year? I understand that we're going to be...
Well, operationally, it will be in the black. There have been some times in the past, I think those, and Mr. Collins is here too, but I think that primarily had to do with our competition, which through some periods of time, were going through expansions and construction themselves, so they weren't available. So operationally, the Convention Center has been in the black before, but we're back in the black again operationally. We are still not covering the debt service. That doesn't include the debt service, and that's really what the hotel and the LA Live development is designed to do, is to bring down that annual subsidy from the general fund on the debt service.
The money that we're generating here, colleagues, from this project is the best. Oftentimes, when we had the valley secession and other things that were before us, people complained that money was being taken out of their areas and spent elsewhere. This is the best example, especially with redevelopment, of local money being spent locally. And one of the reasons that I support this and I'm voting for this today is not just on the project. Project is important, and it's something that we should all look at and embrace, but I'm voting for this project because we need affordable housing in the city, and that is an even higher priority. I'm voting for this project because we need good-paying jobs in the city, and that's an even higher priority. I'm paying, I'm voting for this project because we need to see the sort of partnership where we do have a win-win with labor and developers coming together, and we show how powerful a city we can be, and we are when we are united. You know, downtown gets beat up a lot, but I remind the public that downtown, if you look at parking revenues, pays tens of millions of dollars more than it receives, so that the city can have the services like police and fire and paramedic and streets that are paved and trash collect. Downtown generates much more gross receipts tax and our business tax than it has ever retains when it is spent there. Downtown is the most vital economic engine to our city, and our investment in downtown is something that not only those of us who live near downtown have a stake in, but everybody inside the borders of this city have a stake in as well. I want to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry. She's done an extraordinary job on something that was one of the most difficult, political, prickliest things to do, and she deserves a round of applause from all of us. Because she's done something, not only for her district, she's done something for 15 council members, she's done something for every person here in Los Angeles, and I want to thank you, as well as the other people who volunteered their time. Eli Brode, who has taken this on as a civic activism, the folks from labor and the community who sat down and made sure we could have a community benefits package. And I want to thank the developers, because, you know, one thing that's not reported on a lot is that there's a huge risk in this. And in fact, if we didn't have a developer who was willing to put their own money forward on this, there is a huge risk, and I don't think we probably would have had the package of affordable housing on-site, the package of living wage jobs, the package of economic growth that we would have if we didn't have a developer who believed in this as well. So congratulations, and you have my strongest support, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just wanted to stand and again, thank my colleague, Councilwoman Jan Perry, for navigating through what we all know. navigating through what we all know. Anytime we have small meeting or large developments in our council districts, we know from beginning to end, it is an incredible process. But the grandness of this project, I'm sure duplicated all those issues and concerns and community meetings and concessions and compromises more than probably any of us have ever had to deal with. But what we have before us today is an absolutely beautiful project. And it does warm my heart, Councilmember Rosendahl, to see business, labor, community, all together on this project. And yes, we had some government intrusion on this project by demanding certain things. But yes, we got back a tremendous benefit in so many ways—from the open space to the jobs, to local hiring, towards—to the community benefits package. And I love the fact that this project will allow people of diverse backgrounds, diverse incomes, to be living together side by side. And I look at Los Angeles right now as—it's one of the toughest times we've been in—in terms of interracial tension, in terms of gang violence. And I think projects like this, that encourage people of, again, different backgrounds, different incomes, living side by side, reaping benefits together, will go a long way, I believe, towards improving relationships between people in all parts of Los Angeles. So this is a great, great project. And I applaud Eli Brode for your leadership, for your backing of this, related companies, for being the developer on this project. It truly is something beautiful. And you know, we don't talk enough about the fact, colleagues, that tourism is the second-largest industry in Los Angeles. And this project will increase our ability to attract conventions and tourists to Los Angeles. And every 4% increase in tourism generates $12 million that comes into our general fund, which, as you know, is the money that we can use to back the priorities that we believe in, like public safety, and hopefully, in the future, to prevention of gang violence in the city of Los Angeles. So this is a good project. I support it wholeheartedly. Let's move ahead, and I look forward to the day when we can have a Harbor Live down on the waterfront in San Pedro.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. We look forward to that as well. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And lots of things have been said this morning about this project. It's important to the city of Los Angeles. It's important to the valley that we represent. And I know we have some people who are very apprehensive in the valley, those of us that represent. What does this mean for us? Well, what it means for the San Fernando Valley, what it means for the city, is the ability to help attract people to that downtown. It needs more money. It needs more money for the city of Los Angeles so that we can have more fire and police, that we can repair our streets, all of that. Because—and we know this, both labor and business know this too—with a good economy, where people can afford to live, where they can walk to a location, they're going to invest in the city of Los Angeles. And you know, I have come down on numerous occasions over the weekend—and Jan lives down this way—but you know, over at Disney Hall. The excitement that you see with the kids—and my three-and-a-half-year-old were there on a Saturday morning, people walking on Grand Avenue, people going to Moca and being able to cross the street and go to Disney Hall. That's what we want to see downtown. That is something that we think will be critical to, I think, the future of the city. And I had an email from one of my constituents who said it's going to dwarf the Music Center and Moca and Disney Hall. And I said, they want this. This is going to help those entities that are there. And she talked about open space. I said, this is going to make the park that has existed a very long time, that you know, goes from the Music Center to here, that no one knows about, no one uses, and has more cement than grass in that area. And I think what we're going to see in the design that this committee has put together and with the leadership, as everyone has said, of Jan Perry, because Jan is one of those who just looks straight ahead, does what she needs to do, gets people involved and community support, and sometimes quietly gets that done. And the people that are here today have made it possible. And so I wanted to stand and support this project. And as Eric mentioned—I've talked about this before when we were voting for the hotel down near Staples. Tom Bradley, for his entire career as the mayor, tried to get a hotel there, did everything possible—I'm sure even tried to get Eli to build a hotel there at some point. But it was just not possible. I mean, that is the balance that we have to create here in the city to have a program—a project like this that is going to be an icon for a city, that is going to bring the kind of resurgence and will benefit the entire city of Los Angeles. And so I just wanted to stand as well and support the project. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Weezer, to be followed by Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I followed the development of this project when I was on the school board, as we were looking to build a visual and performing arts high school right on the corner of Sesar Chavez and Grant. And it's remarkable how we're linking all of Grand Avenue and this project with our cultural and our educational institutions. And I think it's going to be a great link, not only for the students who go there, but for downtown and the city of L.A. as a whole. And now we have to start thinking of other linkages. We're going to have the L.A. River and the redevelopment of that area to take out all that concrete, put more greenery, more activity along that river. And the river here that touches downtown L.A. has been selected as one of the nodes to put more resources into that area. So can you imagine the next 10, 15 years, what downtown L.A. will look like when we fly over Los Angeles and we see beautiful Grand Avenue project there, a green, luscious river with Staples in the area there developing? Not to mention the area that I represent in downtown L.A., the Arts District, that we're seeing a lot of activity there with the historic core. It's a great time for Los Angeles. This is a very important anchor in seeing Los Angeles develop and change for not only ourselves, but for the perception that other people have of Los Angeles and what it is. And I think where we go forward, this is going to truly add to a better, positive idea of what Los Angeles can be and should be. And finally, let me mention that we know this is a beacon of progress, as I mentioned, but at the same time, the amenities are tremendous for all sectors of Angelenos, working to provide living wages in this project, working to ensure that we have more activity for open space, and not to mention the economic benefits this will provide to all of Los Angeles. I do have one question, and I should ask that publicly, and just to give me a peace of mind, to give the public a peace of mind. The support we're giving to this project—we're saying we're supporting it through the public offers, because we expect some return, and we talked a lot about those returns. But do we expect to come back in a few years, as this project is going forward, to say, hey, we need more public support? Or would this be it?
I do not expect that. I will tell you that, as I said to start this off, the point is to finance a catalytic project that makes other things happen. So the question sometime later—with continuing to use public money to finance additional development would be very problematic, because this is the catalytic project. This is what the investment is for.
Great. Thank you very much. And finally, I want to give a big thank you to all the persons involved. I know through your leadership—I remember all the meetings that were going on for years and sometimes reaching over to the school district, talking about the great new school we're going to see there. And Eli Brode, thank you for your support and for the school and the other educational support you've given while I was on the school board, and now this, a great anchor for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can tell you that I was somewhat skeptical as I began to review this process, and as I'm always concerned about the financial impacts. And as we explored this last night, committee, I think you did a very good job of pointing out that there are firewalls basically built around this, that the public infrastructure will be built along with the project incrementally, that all those public benefits will go along with the project incrementally, so that the city has never lost anything if the project goes south on us and we're hanging with unimproved projects that never got done. So those go along at the same time. Secondly, that over a 20-year lifespan, this—there will be an investment on the part of the city, but it's all new money investment, not taken from the general fund. So we don't lose anything in our day-to-day operations that we don't already currently have. And then after 20 years, we begin to recuperate that money in profitability. I think the thing that really changed my mind was last night, as I was driving to Mr. Parks' Offsite Budget and Finance Committee, as I drove through South Central and down near Staples Arena. Looking at what we did at L.A. Live, what we did at Staples Arena, but looking at all the things that are going on around there—the cranes everywhere, construction taking place, the collateral benefit that's not part of the project is huge. And we saw that in Hollywood, with Hollywood Highland Project. And we're seeing it as we invest in these projects, they become a center node, but what goes on around it is not captured in the project, but is captured in our city budget. And I think the thing—we can't really put a number on, but we know that if we place a number on the project and contain it, that anything that happens above and beyond that is profit to our city's general fund. And so in the long run, to answer those people in the valley—that I got the same emails that Wendy got and others—to answer those folks is that the overall cumulative impact is greater than the potential loss at any time during the project. Would that be a fair summation, Mr. Miller?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's the most important thing. One thing I did ask for, Ms. Perry, and I'd ask you—I asked this last night, and I asked for your help on this. As we look to the 20% reserve for rental housing for low and median-income families, for workforce-type families, is that there is no reservation in there for police, fire, and teachers. And as we look to the downtown quarter, particularly as we're building so many new schools, we're trying to get an investment in our police department, that officers understand their community that they work in, that they're not driving from Lancaster to serve in downtown L.A. The best way to get that feeling of community is that they live there. And I would hope that you would work with us in getting a reservation of that 20% housing as much as possible for police, fire, and teachers, so that we get them—to be a part of the community, that they serve and understand the uniqueness of downtown L.A., not just driving from Lancaster and enforce policies of the city of L.A. And I think that's an important point. So I'd appreciate if we could get your support on that and try and work that out, particularly as we look to the $100 million housing fund that we have to encourage those kind of uses. So thank you very much, and I appreciate, Mr. Brode, all you—all the work you've done for the city. But on this project in particular, I think it was falling apart at one point, and I thank you and Ms. Perry particularly for saving it. This will be one of those things that we look back at after we've all left office and say, look what happened downtown L.A., and we were a part of that. And this project is going to be a very, very big component of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to stand and thank Ms. Perry for her effort, and also want to thank Jerry for the in-depth analysis he gave the community yesterday at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. When we talked to the community after that presentation, it's the first time they had a real, clear understanding in how in-depth this was. When you talked about the firewalls and the sits of the city funding, it was clear that that was protected, because many news stories gave this impression that it was a giveaway program. When they saw that there was residential housing for purchase and for rentals, they had a clear understanding. The park, green area, was something that they clearly thought was a major plus, and they see this as the catalytic project that you're talking about. Probably the one area that they mentioned after the meeting and was most interested is the local hiring. This is something that comes up on every project—from 30 million to 600 million to a billion. People want to know who's going to get the jobs. And to put a percentage in and to mandate it, but also to follow through, because we've had other projects in which there was a promise, and yet there was not fulfilled as it went through. And so that's the only issue of tension that came out of the meeting as to whether that was going to be a follow-through, whether it's going to be assurance that people that lived in the immediate area were going to be able to get these jobs, were they going to be given some consideration? Or were these massive crews from different parts of the county that came with the developer, are they the ones that's going to come in and get the jobs? And I think that's the one unsettling point that came out of the Budget and Finance Committee yesterday. And we tried to assure them that there was controls to ensure that was going to happen, just as there were controls about how the money was going to be spent. So I just want to say thank you, because that was the clearest understanding from you and the CRA that the community has had in South Los Angeles about something in another part of the city. They read about it, they hear about it, but they've never had that upfront discussion where you laid it out just in plain language as to what they could expect, and then begin to see that this is going to be a reality in most of our lifetimes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And just to close, I really want to also thank the staff who worked so hard for several years on this project. And I want to acknowledge the great effort of Martha Welborn, who worked very, very hard, and David Rigatello—I don't know if David is here—David, there he is. David Rigatello from the Redevelopment Agency. And while as elected officials, we're supposed to be beaten up, they're not paid to do that. And they took the stress of this project and moved it forward professionally, very capably. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, because too often, the folks who are, you know, behind the scenes go unrecognized. I also want to again reiterate my appreciation of the incredible leadership of our chairperson, Supervisor Gloria Molina. She said out of the gate, if we can't get a park and open space for all the people of Los Angeles and Los Angeles County included, then there would be no reason for her to do this. And she held fast to that. And I would credit her in large part for ensuring that the developers understood the highest priority—or one of the highest priorities—to bring open space and to make it available for all of us, all Angelenos. And the fact that they were so willing to work with us side by side, the sense of connection between the city and the county in moving through this process has been unprecedented, and I hope it portends something even greater in the future. And the issue of local hiring is one that we have had to wrestle with every time we have a project of this magnitude. But I think this project has gone well beyond what we have done in the past. And between this project and the expansion of the Staples Project, it's led to our creating a working group to prepare a draft of a local hiring ordinance, so that we can stop doing this dance each and every time we have a project of this magnitude, and put it out there, put it on the table, so that when a developer makes a proposal, they'll understand what our obligations are coming in. And we'll be able to bring that forth in the next few months. So with that, I hope that we have a unanimous vote and move this forward and make this the city that we deserve to have.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Labange.
I'm sorry I wasn't able to hear all what you have done to help this happen, but I wanted to rise and salute you for the work that you have done, and your staff, and others, and Mr. Miller, but really, Jan Perry, because you've done your homework on this. You've created the opportunity to have a win-win for a lot of people. And I can only say that it's a wonderful job that you do in creating this sense of downtown with others, because that's what it's all about. This city's just 225 years old, and we're re-making it every day. And this improvement, this grand improvement for Grand Avenue will only make it a better city for all of us. I just wanted to rise and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That closes our speaker queue. So with that, Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is unanimously approved. Please, forthwith, if there's no objection.
The next item, Mr. President, is item number 49.
Okay. Colleagues, we have item number 49. Ms. Hahn, did you want to move—reopen—oh, sorry, the public hearing on that, Ms. Hahn? First? Okay, we will do that first then. And I know that we have folks that were here for the last item as well. And so if we can ask folks to take their conversations, please, so that we can hear our public speakers. If we can take those conversations outside, please. Thank you all. Our first speaker on this one will be Veronica Perez Becker. If I could ask you to step to the side so we can have our podium cleared. Thank you.
I'm Veronica Perez Becker from the Central City Association. Within one month of this council's vote to extend the living wage ordinance to hotels beyond city contractors, over 100,000 of your constituents told you loud and clear that they felt the city had overstepped its boundaries. This council voted to rescind the ordinance, telling those 100,000 petitioners that a referendum would not be necessary. Yet, here we are, less than two weeks later, considering an ordinance that is substantially the same. This ordinance, like the last one, extends the living wage to private businesses beyond city contractors. This ordinance, like the last one, contains an exemption for collective bargaining agreements. This ordinance, like the last one, contains an exemption for collective bargaining agreements. The purported package of benefits included in the ordinance is not material, and many of those benefits were already promised. This ordinance is not what the business community agreed to, and is not assured that the living wage will not be extended to other businesses. If you pass this ordinance, there will be a highly visible fight in the courts. There will be more negative publicity painting L.A. as business unfriendly, like the Times editorial calling the city "a job killer." And once the applause from this gallery dies down, we're going to be left with the sound of businesses and jobs walking out the door. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Tobin.
Good morning, members of the council. I am Gary Tobin, president of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. And over the last weekend, the chamber's board of directors voted unanimously not to support the substitute ordinance. As all of you know, at the invitation of the mayor and council president Garcetti, the chamber participated in three January meetings with stakeholders to develop a compromise acceptable to all parties. We worked diligently with you to reach an understanding and stood with you at the January 31 press conference, where you announced that the council would rescind the existing ordinance and submit a substantially different ordinance in the near future. We call these negotiations a work in progress. When our board of directors reviewed the substitute ordinance over the weekend, they concluded that it is not substantially different from the original, and it provides no long-term assurances to other sectors of the business community. While the new ordinance contains added provisions discussed during the negotiations, at the heart of both ordinances remains a requirement that a private business having no contractual relationship with the city must pay a minimum wage higher than the state minimum wage unless that business has a collective bargaining agreement with a labor union. During the negotiations, the chamber incorporated language intended to make it more difficult for the city to target employers in other industries. But our board remembers that 10 years ago, when the original living wage ordinance was adopted, the city council promised that it would only apply to businesses that voluntarily sought to do business with the city. The business community stands united against this type of government intervention in negotiations between labor and business. It discourages business growth and limits job opportunities for the very workers it seeks to protect. We encourage you to put this ordinance aside and continue working towards a solution that addresses these principal concerns of business. Thank you.
Keith Richman is our next speaker. Okay, Dominic Rubelkoppa.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this issue. As a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, as a member of the Chamber of Commerce PAC, and as one of the five original signers to the referendum on this matter, I'm very concerned about the speed with which this is moving forward. It's my understanding that there are no time limits, we're not up against any artificial time limits. There's plenty of time to consider these matters. There's plenty of time for the representatives to continue to meet with the business community, and I implore you to do so. I know it's hard, there's a lot of pressures, and I know your intentions are good. I know you want things to work well. But I guarantee you, the length of time that we've spent on this is only a fraction of the matter that immediately came before us, where business and labor were given the time to work together and work matters out. You all applauded that, you were all supportive of the Grand Avenue project. How did that happen? People sat down, they worked together, and they solved problems. Give us the opportunity to do that again. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brendan Huffman.
Good morning, council members. I'm Brendan Huffman with VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We're starting to hear a similar theme from previous speakers, so I'm not going to be redundant. But I do want to say that VICA is very aware and concerned that 103,000 Angelenos signed a petition to qualify a referendum on this issue for the May 15th ballot, and we would like to see that initiative put back on the ballot. The new ordinance is very similar to the previous ordinance, and some of my members in the Valley think the new ordinance is worse than the original ordinance. So we'd like to see it back on the May ballot, not February '08, not March '08, but May 15th, 2007. I would also like to recognize some of my friends from the Valley who are here. You heard that Assemblyman Keith Richman was here until a few minutes ago. From my board, we also have representatives from the United Chambers of Commerce, the Mid Valley Chamber of Commerce, the North Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Again, thanks for your consideration, and please, let's look at putting this back on the May ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. David Voss is our next speaker. Not here. Cindy Bolton. After that will be Lori Hughes.
Good morning, Mr. President and City Council. I'm here, my name is Cindy Bolton, I'm the general manager at the Radisson Los Angeles Airport Hotel, and I'm representing the hotels on the corridor area. On behalf of the hotels at Century Corridor, I'd like to make the following statements. We, the hotels, hotel representatives, never agreed to the compromise on this issue. We firmly believe that the ordinance you consider today is not substantially different from the original ordinance, and this council rescinded. It is the same issue, only it's masked over by a few bells and whistles. This is still an action to single out 12 hotels in an area of the city and mandate our living wage and our business practices. As it is not even remotely different, this proposed replacement ordinance ignores the will of over 100,000 Los Angeles voters who signed the petition to repeal the living wage ordinance. For these reasons, we ask you to vote no. You know, it's interesting also, I sat here and I listened about the Grand Project and how everyone worked together. Again, I feel that there's a higher level of success if we could slow down the process. Everyone who is represented in this party, whether it be the city, the hotels, labor, the developers, if everyone sat down, I think that we would have a higher level of results. So again, I ask you to please slow the process down, take everything into consideration, and have us all come together as a team collectively, representing all the employees in the area, as well as the citizens of Los Angeles, to make the best possible decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Hughes is our next speaker. After that will be Pamela Caratti.
Good morning. My name is Lori Hughes. I'm the executive director of Gateway to L.A. Business Improvement District. On behalf of the members of Gateway to L.A., I respectfully request your no vote on the proposed living wage ordinance before you today. First and foremost, this proposed ordinance is not significantly different. It is merely the original living wage ordinance, dressed up with benefits package without benefits. While the Gateway bid is named party to the proposed ordinance, we are not part of the process, we were not part of the process, to draft details of the supposed benefits. Had we been consulted, we would have told you the following. The bid since 2001 has spent nearly $200,000 on four different market analysis feasibility studies to attract or develop retail, entertainment, and conference center development to the area. While we would welcome the city's $50,000 contribution, the ordinance is very narrow in scope and does not meet the actual needs of the area. Secondly, funding of $1.3 million from MTA Call for Projects was granted in 2001 for streetscape improvements, including new median islands, landscaping, refurbishment, and signage on Century Boulevard between Aviation and La Cienega Boulevards. This project will begin shortly and is to be completed by November of this year. This is not a new benefit, this was already in place. Thirdly, in July 2006, a comprehensive waste recycling program was initiated by the bid and the Bureau of Sanitation. The Bureau of Sanitation completed an analysis of all hotel and office member properties in December of 2006, and a phased-in implementation schedule will be proposed at our next board meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, it's time. Pamela Caratti. After that is Paul Verduin.
Pam Caratti had to leave. My name is Debbie Schultz, president and CEO for United Chambers of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley. The new ordinance is not significantly different, as you've heard, from the first ordinance. But also, the creation of an airport hospitality enhancement zone is not justification for the imposition of the new living wage ordinance. Furthermore, it creates additional uncertainty. A future city council could redefine all CRAs and bids to meet the enhancement zones criteria, thereby creating a patchwork of living wage zones. This could cause businesses to abandon these areas, leaving these communities worse off than they were without the CRA and the BID designations. We urge you to work with us, and we urge you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Verduin is next, and then Mike Pfeiffer.
Good morning. My name is Paul Verdoen with Courtyard Marriott LAX, representing the Century Boulevard Hotels as well. I also want to reiterate that many other people have said that this ordinance is not substantially different, and we were involved in some dialogue with you, and I want to reiterate what Cindy had said earlier, that it sure does seem to be a big rush to get this pushed through without continuing dialogue. We just received the ordinance last Thursday for the first time. It needs to go to a committee, it needs to go through the proper processes. You know, I urge you to take the appropriate steps and really discuss this, work this out, make this a successful thing. We want to be a partner. We are here wanting to work with the city and labor to make this work. Thank you.
Mike Pfeiffer, please.
Good morning, council president. Actually, a little bit afternoon, members of the council. I'm Mike Pfeiffer, I'm the executive director of the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. We're a nonprofit association of over 90 hotels and 50 suppliers to the hotel lodging industry. We also enjoy working very closely with the California Restaurant Association in our position. While this replacement living wage ordinance contains some very attractive enhancements that we certainly would look forward to discussing further, the ordinance truly fails to meet the requirements to be substantially different from the living wage ordinance that has been rescinded. As was distributed to you, and I'd like to certainly redistribute this and enter into the record, a, perhaps, this is a letter from our legal counsel, George Kiefer, with Manat Phillips and Phillips. In essence, it says that focusing on the principal feature, which is the application of the living wage regulation, we feel a court will conclude that this living wage ordinance, in its essence, is the same as the previous living wage ordinance, and therefore is invalid. We do look forward to continuing dialogue with the council and with the staff, and certainly with other members of the city, to come up with some resolution of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Veerik is our next speaker.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. In order to have a living wage, you have to have a wage. And to the extent that this ordinance would discourage jobs, price jobs out of the marketplace, there will be a lot of people who will not be working. And that really defeats the purpose. You need people with jobs. And, well, as far as the real estate goes, if it doesn't work, the hotels would be good candidates for condo conversions. But I also had on my speaker card, I wanted to speak about the Section 8 thing earlier, but I know that's off the agenda now. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, next we'll have the Van Nuys, and we'll hear from Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. Can you move into the frame, please? We have some constituents that came, they saw Zuma Dog, and they said, first of all, they wanted to remind me not to yell, but they do love what I have to say, y'all. They came here to talk on Grand Avenue 21. You wouldn't call their cards, because you had to give Eli Brode, the billionaire, two minutes extra time, then you didn't cut him off.
Sir, if you could please address what's before us here, and we had a public hearing before on that one.
Okay, let's talk, okay, thank you. Yes, 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 LAX. And by the way, Eric, I'd like two extra minutes, like you gave billionaire Eli Brode. Let's keep it fair. Chamber of Commerce, they don't like this.
For the record, if I could interrupt you again, Mr. Dog, we had a public hearing, and I
Please hold my time.
...that we were able to, because we had a public hearing before, open to council motion, the speakers that were asked to come before us. I think you know that, since you've been around council, so please, if you could confine your comments to what is before us. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take it up in the public. I'm Mayor Sam. But Chamber of Commerce, they don't like this LAX thing. It means there's going to be a lawsuit. You bamboozled them, you're rushing it through, there wasn't time for input, they didn't get to go over it, it's still too much of the same, there's no assurances even. So once again, going to be sued. Why are you rushing it through? Let's see, again, it's not different enough. Greg Smith got up there and he hammered it. I congratulated Greg Smith, he hammered this for saying it's not different enough, and it doesn't even make any promises, there's too many hurdles. How do you, you know, first of all, you have to build a convention center to make this thing go through? Are you kidding me? You can't even fix this clock, you can't even fix that phone. You think you're going to build a new convention center downtown while you think you're going to build a subway down there? Ain't going to happen. Try to fix this clock first, then we'll talk about these things. And then if you do build a convention center, then you're going to be killing downtown, y'all. Oh, they're telling me to please calm down, but it gets so worked up, y'all, my lovely ladies, thank you for coming down. But if you're going to build a convention center at the LAX, then that's going to kill everything you're trying to do to restoration downtown, y'all, because then they'll just fly in, they won't even have to go to Staples Center, they won't even have to go to Grand Avenue. And so that's why I say you gotta vote no on this right now. Let's work it out, let's get everybody involved, let's make it different enough so the city don't get sued, and then we can put it to a vote, and yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. We'll now go to Tom Walsh here, and then Alma Romero. Tom Walsh.
Tom Walsh, Hotel and Restaurant Workers Union. This ordinance preserves a living wage for hotel workers on Century Boulevard, who are among the lowest-paid hotel workers in the city, even though these hotels take in the second-most revenue of any submarket in Los Angeles. This ordinance is different in several key ways from the living wage ordinance adopted in November. First, it commits the city to investing in the corridor, something the hotels have long called for, that we believe will benefit workers, hotels, and business. Second, it creates a framework for future investment, both public and private. Third, it establishes a clear set of requirements for future living wages, standards that will ensure that a tool such as this is used only where it addresses a clear need and after substantial debate. Fourth, it requires the city to both evaluate the ordinance as it stands and to determine how it can best help employers provide affordable health care. Finally, it phases in living wages, giving employers time to implement the ordinance. These were the issues identified by the hotel and business representatives, and we believe these new elements have created a new approach to this subject. A yes vote today sends a strong message that the council is committed to reducing the ever-growing gap between the rich and the poor in hotel worker jobs that can't be exported. We urge a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma Romero. Our next speaker is Alma Romero. We have Alma Romero, once, twice? Alma. And then after that will be Mark Salzberg.
Buenos dias. Good morning. Mi nombre es Alma Romero. My name is Alma Romero. Mis compañeros y yo nos encontramos en serios problemas con nuestro trabajo. My coworkers and I are going through a very difficult time at work. Por muchos años hemos trabajado muy duro. For many years, we've worked very hard. Vivimos en condiciones de pobreza. We live under poverty, conditions of poverty. Tenemos trabajo inseguros. We don't have our jobs secure. No contamos con un seguro médico accesible. We cannot afford the health insurance. Para nuestros ingresos. Based on our income. Este salario, este salario digno. This living wage. Que estamos a un paso de lograr. That we're a step, a step away from getting. Es una gran esperanza para nosotros, los trabajadores del Century Boulevard, y nuestras familias. It's a great hope for all of the workers on Century Boulevard and our families. Quiero agradecer el apoyo que el señor alcalde y los señores de concejales nos han dado. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for all your support. Y les pedimos una vez más su apoyo para este salario digno. And we ask you once more for your support for this living wage. Es triste oír aquí a estas personas decir que les están imponiendo este salario cuando lo que ellos quieren es llevarnos a vivir a una extrema pobreza. It's very sad to hear these people here talk about how they're forcing this living wage out. And what they really want to do is just to take those, or take the workers to live in extremely poverty conditions. Miles de trabajadores del Century Boulevard estamos trabajando duro, estamos trabajando tiempo extra, en condiciones infrahumanas, y no es justo que aquí vengan a desear que y no es justo que aquí vengan a decir ellos que les estamos imponiendo este salario. Thousands of workers on Century Boulevard are working under terrible conditions on that boulevard. And it's very sad to hear what they're, that they're saying that they were imposing something on them. Yo les quiero decir aquí a todos ellos, a toda la industria hotelera, que este es un paso que hemos ganado. Y vamos a seguir adelante, vamos a seguir luchando por un trabajo digno, por, por un trabajo seguro, por respeto. And I want to tell them that this is just one more step to get what we want, but we're going to keep on fighting until we get jobs that, that are quality jobs and with respect. Y vamos a seguir luchando porque no solo merecemos un salario de 1040, merecemos más porque nosotros, los trabajadores de nuestro trabajo, damos el 100%. Y vamos a seguir esta lucha, es solo un escalón que hemos subido, y vamos a seguir luchando. And I want to tell them that 1040 is just a step ahead, but it's not the end, because we deserve a lot more. And we're going to keep on fighting. Nosotros como padres de familia, en mi caso, yo tengo mis hijos en la universidad, todos tenemos hijos, queremos un buen futuro para nuestros hijos. As a family member and as a parent, I want the best for my kids, and I want, I want, I want the best for my kids. No queremos que nuestros hijos sufran lo que nosotros estamos sufriendo. I don't want my kids to go and suffer what, what we're suffering. Seguiremos subiendo escalones y les vamos a probar a la industria hotelera que vamos a lograrlo. We're going to keep on escalating this, and we're going to show this industry that we're going to win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Salzberg. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Mark Salzberg. Folks, if we can, Mark Salzberg is our next speaker.
Hi, I'm Mark Salzberg. I represent the California Democratic Council here in Los Angeles. With me today, I have Rick Jacobs from the Courage Campaign, and presidents and leaders from various Democratic Clubs within the city. I'd like them to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name's Greg Good. I'm the Vice President of Political Affairs for the West Los Angeles Democratic Club.
Tom Camerella, immediately past President of the Culver City Democratic Club.
Kelly Willis, new and current President of the West Los Angeles Democratic Club.
David Green, President of the San Pedro Democratic Club.
And I am Julian Berger. I'm the President of the Progressive Democratic Club.
I'm Rick Jacobs, President, Chair, whatever I call myself, of the Courage Campaign. We have 31,000 members across the state. We're nonpartisan, but very progressive and very supportive of this resolution.
Together, we represent 22,000 people in the city of Los Angeles. We're here to encourage the council to vote yes on the new ordinance. This is a win-win-win for the city of Los Angeles, for the workers in the LAX corridor, and for the businesses in the LAX corridor. We're very disappointed that the businesses have reneged on this agreement. They were involved in the negotiations. This is, in fact, a substantial difference from the original ordinance. It's different because the businesses who participated in this new ordinance actually made it so. We reject their assertion that it is substantially the same. We urge the council to vote yes on this new ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ayesha Young. Our next speaker is Ayesha Young. Is Ayesha Young here? Ayesha Young? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the pastor of Echo Park United Methodist Church, a congregation of diverse working people. As most of you, I believe, are aware on the council, throughout the leadership and membership of the diverse faith communities of this city, there is a strong and passionate belief in the moral imperative of a living wage for working people. For us, this is not a new or novel idea. This is an old and spiritually rooted idea that's present in the scripture of all our traditions. So we have been moved, many of us, across different faith lines to be present with and support the hotel workers of the Century Corridor as they struggle to move their piece of history in the direction of justice, and so doing, move us all to take an important step toward improving the quality of life in this city for all. We know that this is one step in the march toward a just and decent quality of life for all in this city. We know that this is one step in that march, that there are low wages, an enormous gap between rich and poor, a crying need for affordable healthcare. There's much out there. There are many steps ahead. And so I'm here today to encourage you to do your part in enabling us to take this step, as, as you have been taking, that you continue to support these steps toward justice, and that you stand strong against the interests arrayed against it. And I come to let you know that I represent many who are committed to continue to accompany the working families of this city step by step as they move forward, on behalf of themselves and the community of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Rick Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Courage Campaign, as I mentioned, has 31,000 members in the state of California. We circulated a petition in December that we delivered to the hotel workers who were fasting in front of the hotels on Century Boulevard. We did that because our members believe that this is actually an issue, a very fundamental issue of fairness and frankly, of capitalism. If capitalism is going to work in this country and in this city and in this state, it's going to work because those at the bottom have the opportunity to rise and to help close the gap. If we don't provide that mobility, the system becomes inflexible and it will break. I see this as also as an investor, as a very, very simple yes. It's a yes because, in the long run, investing in people is what makes companies stronger. This is not a win-lose. This is only a win-win. I would urge you to pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. That closes our public comment on this. We have Mr. Smith and then Ms. Hahn. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank everyone who came down today to speak their voice on this very important issue. Colleagues, what we, what we have before us today is what I believe demonstrates a very significant achievement by this city, by this city council, to improve the Century Boulevard corridor next to LAX. And to remind everyone about the history of this, it began not a few weeks ago, not a few months ago, it began almost a year ago in March, that my committee, Tourism, Commerce and Trade, along with Councilmember Rosendahl, began to look into ways to improve this corridor, to make it more successful, more prosperous. We, we believe that this corridor is the welcome mat to Los Angeles. And among other things that we began to discover, we began to discover the plight of the workers, the hotel workers that make those hotels thrive. They are the face of hospitality for Los Angeles. And we found that many of them had been working many years, sometimes 20 years, for one hotel, and yet did not make a decent wage. We learned that they did not receive their hard-earned tips that they should have been getting. And we learned that many times they were fired because a hotel changed its name or changed ownership. So we introduced an ordinance that addressed those concerns. And the corner piece of that, in my opinion, was making sure that 3,500 hotel workers along the Century Boulevard corridor received a living wage. And let's remember, a living wage is a little over $9 an hour. And if they're lucky and work full-time, we're talking about $19,000 a year. That is the government's definition of poverty. And these workers want to be home at night. They want to be with their families. They want to be helping their kids with their homework. They want to make sure that their kids are, are, are doing well in school and are staying out of gangs. They want to attend school events and parent-teacher conferences. Instead, many of them were working two to three jobs just to put food on their tables and to keep their homes running. They want a basic quality of life, and we want to help provide that for them. And by the way, after we passed that ordinance, the business community decided to get enough signatures to do a referendum on that ordinance. And I will say unequivocally, they did not get 100,000 signatures of people who wanted to overturn this ordinance. They wanted, they got 100,000 signatures of people who wanted to vote to give the living wage to people in Los Angeles. But we, in the spirit of good faith, in the spirit of working together with the Chamber of Commerce, working together with the business community, of working together with the Hotel Association, we decided to sit down and begin to work on compromises. We did address their concerns. We met for hours. Some of my colleagues met all day one Sunday to work to, to meet their concerns and address what they wanted. And in response, we agreed to rescind our original ordinance only because we believed in good faith that we had the partnership from the business community to not only pay workers' living wage, but to agree to accept investment from the city of Los Angeles in the corridor. And I hope the city attorney will go through item by item on how this new ordinance is substantially different, and how we will be providing the kind of infrastructure and public investment in the corridor to truly make that a destination for Los Angeles. All I can say, Bill, is I wish I had a Century Boulevard corridor in the 15th Council District, because you will be getting so much investment and so much help from this city to truly revitalize that area. It's, it's an excellent thing. But it's unfortunate today that what we're hearing now is the business community going back on their word, going back on their negotiations, going back on the hours that we spent working with them to address their concerns. And for them to say that this provision, this new ordinance only has bells and whistles is just absolutely not accurate. This is not an appearance of being different. This ordinance is substantially different, and there will be great improvements. And for those who say, what's the time limit? Why are we rushing this through? Let's go back to the table and negotiate. Let's go back and concern. Here's the time limit. The time limit is every one of those workers who, right now, is not making a decent living wage, and I don't think we should It's ironic to me that when we do, and I believe we have the votes today, to approve this ordinance, it is unfortunate that we will be labeled anti-business, that we will be labeled not friendly to business, and yet is this not the same city council that just approved $60 million in subsidy for the Grand Avenue project? Is this the same city council that yesterday just broke ground on Hollywood and Vine for a multi-million dollar project? Is this not the same city council that unanimously supported LA Live? And is this not the same city council that passed a historic business tax reform for our businesses? Yes, there is government intrusion in businesses, but we believe we have an obligation to intrude to help business, and we believe we have an obligation to intrude to help the workers. And that's what we're doing here today. We are pro-business, but we are pro-worker, and I think this is a great ordinance for the city of Los Angeles, and I'm ashamed
Our next speaker is Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith is our next speaker, and then Mr. Rosendahl to follow him. Mr. Smith.
Very pleased to give that time to Ms. Hahn, as the mark of the motion, that was appropriate. And I wanted to use that to point out something very simple. I said last week that this was a bait and switch, and I still believe that. But it is not because I discount one moment, your passion, your honesty in approaching something you believe from your heart needs to be addressed. And I commend you and Mr. Rosendahl for doing it in that spirit. And I hope you understand the question I asked today is in the same tone. Okay? It's about what is the right thing to do and how we are doing it, more importantly. And so I'd like the city attorney to come forward. Mr. Sainz, please come forward. I have a couple of questions to ask. And while you're coming forward, it's going to be dealing with the concept of is this substantially different? Very simply stated, the original ordinance was a living wage ordinance. It was titled that. This ordinance is a living wage ordinance. It is titled that. How can you say, when the centerpiece issue is the living wage, and that's the majority of this issue, that this is any different than the previous ordinance? How can you say there's a substantial difference when the very core of the subject is exactly the same?
Assistant City Attorney Teresa Stamos. I'm joined at the table by Deputy City Attorney Adrian Corisani from our General Counsel Division, and Deputy City Attorney Hari Travetti from our Public Integrity Section. I think perhaps it'd be helpful if we could, if we could, Council Member, to start out with a review of the new ordinance and go through the, the new terms. And I'll turn it over to Adrian Corisani for that.
Good afternoon. Through this ordinance, the city is creating an airport hospitality enhancement zone, thereby improving and encouraging the growth and development of business in the zone. And the zone shares its boundaries with the Century Corridor Gateway to LA Business Improvement District. The ordinance provides for the following. The creation of the zone itself, wherein the city will create enhanced and expanded investments and incentives, including: A conference center. Within 180 days of the effective date of the ordinance, the city shall do a study of locations, financing mechanisms, and Lawa participation in financing of this potential conference center. Secondly, workforce development. Within 180 days of the effective date of the ordinance, CDD will implement workforce training program, which will include one or more of the following: customer service training, hospitality training, management training, culinary arts training for hotel workers. CDD will also facilitate English as a Second Language courses through LAUSD. Third, the marketing component. The city will arrange for the development of a program to market hotels in the, in the zone. And $50,000 will be granted to the Century Corridor bid to prepare market analysis and develop materials and data from the analysis to use, to attract new business to the Airport Hospitality Enhancement Zone. Business development. Within 90 days of the effective date of the ordinance, the Office of Finance will develop and recommend a time-limited cap or a reduction in business taxes for businesses, retail shops, and restaurants that relocate to the Airport Hospitality Enhancement Zone. For the retail shops and restaurants, that's for those who don't close other locations to do so. Street improvements. Street services will develop and implement directional and navigational signage to direct drivers to services in the zone, including hotels. Within nine months of the effective date of the ordinance, street services will commence construction of a $1 million set of street improvements, including median islands landscaping between Aviation and La Cienega Boulevards. Within 60 days, street services will develop a plan to expedite needed street and alley resurfacing and sidewalk repair within the zone. And within 180 days of the effective date of the ordinance, they will commence this plan. of the effective date of the ordinance, they will commence this plan. Within sixty days, the CAO and Street Services will report to council on financing options to finance and commence, within one year, construction of new sidewalks in the zone. A remote check-in component is also part of the enhancements. CDD and Lawa will facilitate establishment of remote check-in facilities at each interested hotel in the zone and help expedite and prioritize establishment of these facilities. There's a power rate incentive. The city will investigate the feasibility of extending enterprise and empowerment zones subsidized rates for electric power, or will create new business development incentive rates to reduce vacancy in the zone. Integrated waste management. Sanitation and interested businesses in the zone will develop and implement, within one year of the ordinance's effective date, an incentive rate to reduce vacancy in the Airport Hospitality Enhancement Zone. The ordinance also provides for regulation of wages paid to certain workers in the zone, and it requires that, within one year of the effective date of the ordinance, the CAO must conduct an evaluation of the effect of this requirement on the hotels, hotel customers, and hotel workers. Specifically, the CAO would look at economic impact of the requirement on hotels and the workers, including the impact on worker retention. CAO will also look at the effect of having a non-tiered requirement, that is, it applies to tipped and non-tipped workers alike, including wage compression for workers and its effect on worker retention. And the CAO will look at the impact of the aforementioned enhancements on hotel customer bases, the income, and retention of workers. If the study is not completed within fifteen months from the effective date of the ordinance, the living wage provisions would be suspended until the report is complete. Also, the rate of health benefits is articulated in the ordinance, and that's similar to the city's living wage ordinance. A mandatory, again, by the CAO, of available health plans at similarly sized businesses will be conducted. And the study will look at whether the plans require employee contributions or co-payments, and the prevailing expert views on whether employee contributions have an effect on the cost and quality of health care. The CAO will also look at the city's ability to secure high-quality benefits for workers through regulation. Upon completion of this study, the CAO will recommend whether the city should adjust the living wage requirement for hotels providing health benefits. For example, should they increase the amount of health benefits credits or permit reasonable employee contributions? If the health benefits study isn't completed within nine months from the effective date of the ordinance, the living wage provisions would be suspended until the study is complete. The ordinance also requires an incremental application of the living wage provisions. On the ordinance's effective date, the hotel employers would pay workers no less than eight dollars and twenty-five cents with benefits, not including gratuity, service charge distributions, or bonuses, or nine-fifty without benefits. On July 1st, 2007, workers would be paid a living wage in its entirety. On January 1st, 2008, workers would receive their first annual living wage adjustment, corresponding to changes, if any, in the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers in L.A. Riverside Counties. The ordinance creates a private right of action as an enforcement mechanism, and it includes an exemption for collective bargaining agreements if the waiver of the ordinance's provision is explicit therein. This ordinance also includes a one-year waiver for certain hotel employers. If a hotel employer demonstrates to the city controller by compelling evidence that compliance with the living wage requirements would require a workforce reduction of more than twenty percent, or would curtail workers' hours by more than thirty percent in order to avoid bankruptcy or hotel shutdown, those hotels can receive a waiver for one year from the ordinance's requirements. The controller would reach this determination after reviewing and, if necessary, auditing the hotel employer's financial condition, and the controller's determination shall be subject to review and reversal by a two-thirds vote to the council within ten business days of that determination being made. Finally, the ordinance sets forth the process for future living wage regulation. If the city wants to impose requirements on a business entity that does not have a business relationship with the city, council must secure a study that looks at the effect of such regulation on the target industry or the location, on consumers and clients, on the city's ability to retain and attract new business to the area being affected, and council shall hear public testimony regarding the study at least two weeks before acting on any living wage proposal. The city shall not impose new living wage requirements unless the industry and region regulated receives business benefits stemming from a city asset that match or exceed the benefit the hotels receive from the proximity to LAX currently. Benefits must be significant and can't include things like ordinary city services to public and private businesses in the city. But if the industry being regulated has so many employees being paid less than a living wage as to have a significant negative effect on the city economy as a whole, then the earlier requirements, the study, and the limitations shall not apply. In that case, the industry in question must have more than fifteen thousand employees working in the city, and before it acts, council must request a panel of three economists, chosen by specifications outlined in the ordinance, to submit a written report to council expressing an opinion as to whether the industry in question does have more than fifteen thousand employees, and that the number of employees being paid less than a living wage is so substantial as to have a negative effect on the city economy.
Thank you very much. And what you just did is exactly what I've said all along. That is the bait and switch. And the reason is very simple. What survives from the original ordinance and survives in this ordinance are four things: a living wage ordinance, the opt-out opportunity for unions if they collectively bargain, a bid enhancement, which any area of the city gets, I mean, they could do it right now if they wanted to, because we put it in the budget. There's fifty thousand for any area that wants to organize a bid, and finally, a million dollars for street improvements. Those are the only things that are under the force of law of this ordinance that will survive, because the rest of the language is the bait and switch. You say, "We, the city, we will investigate, we will study, we will facilitate," but there's no force of law in any of those. Because if we don't do anything beyond study the heck out of it, nothing happens except the living wage, the union opt-out clause, and those two budget issues. Nothing's new. Nothing is substantially different. And that's the point I've been making all along. This is not substantially different, and we're putting ourselves at great, great risk. Let me ask the city attorney, and I'll stop my time when we're done, a question. Would you please explain the Stratham case and the Martin case as its applicability to this instance?
Yes. Ironically, the Stratham case is a case where the court found that the new resolution was substantially different and let it go. I know that that was something that was cited by opposing counsel. The Martin case is a case where it was a, where the city sought to lease for commercial purposes, city land. There, the, that initial legislative enactment was subjected to referendum or a referendum petition. The council then introduced a new legislative enactment that essentially only changed the lease term, and that was held to not be different enough from the original. We have in California that we could find five published cases where the California courts have specifically addressed whether a proposed new legislative enactment that was introduced after following a referendum petition was essentially different enough from the previous. And two of those cases, the Martin case that you mentioned, as well as the Lindelli case, which was another case where a contract was let, and the council in response to the referendum petition only changed the term. In those cases, the court said that those changes were not, did not make the new enactment different enough, and struck them down. In three cases that we know of, the court found that the new legislative enactment was different enough. To give you an example, in the city of Sausalito, the city passed a legislative enactment to preserve the waterfront and to seek to purchase the property and then set it aside for park purposes. In doing that, they identified a foundation and a means in order to finance that coming to fruition. That was referendized in the follow-up enactment. The city, again, expressed its desire to purchase the, preserve the waterfront and purchase the property, but did not, but left out the designation of a foundation and the additional terms. And there, the court found that that was different enough. Here, we don't have, you know, and that's all the, pretty much the case law we have to guide us. There's the Straffmore case that you mentioned, but unfortunately, the court in that case does not go through an analysis where they really describe the differences. They just conclude in that case, which was an L.A. case involving the regulations of taxi cabs at Union Station, that they thought that the new legislative act, enactment was different enough. We're dealing with, frankly, in some cases, very old case law. There's, it's scant, and it's going to come down to a factual analysis by the court. But based on what we see in the cases, we've seen sort of one extreme where they've struck it down and they really adhere to this essentially different test. And, you know, in those cases, I think undeniably, there's, the council made very minor tweaks. In this, as my co-council laid out, there's just very, or my colleague laid out, there's, there are a number of differences to this new case. And actually, there's one more case that I should mention. It's Gilbert. And in that case, again, the court found that there was a substantial difference, again, between the old and the new. The original enactment was a business tax. The new enactment was, again, a business tax, but it changed the rate. It phased it in, or actually, it delayed the enforcement or the, I'm sorry, effective date, the operative date, and made some, you know, changes throughout the ordinance. And again, there, the court found that that was good enough. So that's what we have to guide us when we're making this judgment call as to what, how, what a court would do if this is challenged.
In all those cases, did the council show deliberation, where they took their time? They had public comment, they, in other than ten minutes, that they really heard it in committee, that they analyzed any of it, or did they just act, like we're doing today, acting immediately a week later to implement something that's substantially the same?
There wasn't anything in the, in the opinions, so we don't know whether that...
You don't know what the cases were. But it should be presumed...
The opinions don't, don't go to that.
Okay. Mr. Sains, what is a rush? You negotiated a deal, and unlike the previous project that we had before us here on Grand that took over a year or two to do, you rushed to a judgment here, you pushed us into something. That community out there, the business community, saying, "Wait a minute. That's not what we bought off on. We've changed our mind." Ms. Hahn characterized it as backing out of the deal. They characterized it as saying, "We were sold a bill of goods. It's not what we said we agreed to." Why rush into this now? Why not go back to the table and sit down with them and work out those issues so we can have a grand project here that people can buy into, as Mr. Rosendahl alluded to, that everybody agrees to? Why rush this?
Due respect, Councilmember Smith, I don't think there is a rush. I think that the mayor's office and council members' offices sat down and met with the business community. We did get an understanding through proposals that the Hotel Association made of the issues that were of greatest concern and attempted to address them. Now, at some point, those negotiations did break down because, frankly, the association went back to proposals that were off the table. I think it's important to note that what we did agree to with Chamber of Commerce quarantine language, which was their preeminent concern, and they specifically reviewed the language, that language is in this ordinance. Now, I understand that the members of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce subsequently looked at the package as a whole and decided they didn't like it. But the quarantine language that was their preeminent concern is word for word in this ordinance. It is also true, and I want to note, that in evaluating whether this ordinance is sufficiently different from its predecessor, one way that courts have done that evaluation is by looking at what were the concerns of those who were proposing a referendum. And this ordinance addresses, now, not necessarily in a way that they would entirely embrace, but addresses each and every one of the concerns that was raised by the business community in those discussions. For example, as I've mentioned, the quarantine language. Second, the studies that are in this ordinance that were not in its predecessor specifically highlight issues that were raised as of concern to the Hotel Association. For example, a concern was raised about whether there should be a two-tiered living wage, and therefore, the study provision expressly requires that the study look at that question. Second, they raised a question about whether there should be allowed employee contributions to health benefits. So the health benefits study, which is new, specifically requires that that issue be addressed. In addition, we took a look, I took a look, at the submitted ballot argument from the proponents of the referendum, and we made an attempt to address the concerns expressed in that ballot referendum argument as well. For example, the concern was raised, as it was here today, that this, that the living wage element of this ordinance would somehow require hotels to reduce hours or reduce their employment. Because of that, we put the waiver provision that was not in the predecessor that specifically provides for the controller to do a review, and if it can be shown that those effects would occur for a specific hotel, then there would be a one-year waiver. Second, in that submitted ballot argument, there was a concern that I think is overstated, but it was there in writing, that somehow employees had the right to individually turn down health benefits that were being offered to them and therefore receive the higher wage. So we put in the provision that's in this ordinance that was not in its predecessor that says that is not the case. It's the employer prerogative alone whether to provide the health benefits that are envisioned under the living wage portion of the ordinance or not. So each of the differences, and I have left out, because I know you're familiar with them, the incentives and investments, but those were also a concern of the business community because of the notion that this was not adequately supported. Now, I disagree with that as a legal matter, but we made an effort to address it by putting in the two, three pages that are here about incentives and investments. So with respect to each of the concerns that were raised by the business community, we took the time and worked to make sure that they were addressed in the ordinance. Now, again, that doesn't mean that they support the outcome, but each of their issues was raised and meaningfully addressed in the ordinance.
Now, what it says is you address it. It doesn't mean meaningful, because their interpretation of meaningful and yours is different. And that's why I ask you again, what is the rush, Tom? Why do we have to do this today? Why can't you go back to the table and try and resolve those issues what they say exist? Because they say, "You didn't resolve them, you just mentioned them."
Again, I don't think that this is a rush. I do agree we have a difference about how substantively effective those provisions are, but I believe they meaningfully addressed those issues. And I just want to add, for it to be essentially different, not essentially the same ordinance, doesn't mean that the proponents of the referendum have to agree with it or like it. It does mean that you have to grapple with the issues that they raised, and that's exactly what this ordinance does, and that's why it's essentially a different ordinance. Now, I will say to you that you know the mayor's office has, from the beginning of the consideration of this ordinance, wanted to make sure that there was a considered and careful review, and we followed that exact same ultim here in how we went about negotiating what would be in this ordinance. So I don't believe that there was a rush. There was, as you know, a timeline tied to the vote that the council took last week with respect to a referendum in May.
My time has run out. I just want to close with one final thought, members. In here is also a one-million-dollar street improvement program for streets and sidewalks. I can just remind you, all of you, that each and every one of us have a very, very long list of street improvements and sidewalks that aren't getting fixed. If you want to put a sidewalk on the list, you're told it's eighty-three years. Where do you think this money's coming from, folks? It's coming out of each and every one of your districts to fix this problem with this ordinance. Each and every one of you sitting here today are paying out of your, out of your district funds, the street repair money that little you have, and the sidewalk repair money, little that you have, to put into that pot for this ordinance, for this area, and you're losing by voting for this.
Councilmember Garcetti, followed by Councilmember Rosendahl, Parks, and Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be speaking twice, and I want to get to some of the legal issues first, and then I'll come back to the content issues. And I want to address some of the things that were brought up here. I clearly and respectfully disagree with my friend and colleague, Mr. Smith. It's not a bait and switch. This is an expand and strengthen, and something that was done. I've never seen a bait and switch with people at the table who are actually part of the business community, who today say that they weren't able to convince their board but were very much part of the negotiations and asked for many of the specifics that are in here today. A second thing for the record on the legal issues, some have claimed that the things that were added to it were already promised. I can say, as president of this council, Mr. Rosendahl can say, as the representative of that area, these were not promises that were already made that were on the table. It was a laser-focused initial ordinance because of two years of not having people at the table that's dealt specifically and only with the living wage in a very precise manner. The larger issues which we all cared about around the Century Corridor, we tried to have conversations about, but we had not promised these things ahead of time, they were added and are substantially different. On Mr. Smith's count, he named four different things, two of which were absolutely not even there before. The bid enhancements were not there. We can look at the documents, but they absolutely were not. And a million dollars in street improvements, Mr. Rosendahl can confirm, were absolutely not there. On the two things, and there are more than four, by the way, but on the other two things that he claimed, on the, on the actual living wage stuff, which do have force of law, and you can confirm this if you would, the phase-in that you mentioned is different and has a force of law, did not exist in the first ordinance. Second, that if we reneg on any of these elements and they're not in place in a given time period, that the living wage is held in abeyance. That has the force of law, and that is different. Number three, the controller's review. I read that ordinance the first time. I didn't see that there at all. That is a very substantial difference. And fourth, the future living wage recommendation piece is also different. These are, remember, colleagues, if we're going to speak and be honest, we have to look at what we did here before, which is when we had a ordinance dealing with strip clubs. I think we changed one element of that, and that was upheld as substantially different enough. But I don't want to even yield that we need to have something substantially different, though this is a charter city, and we are a charter city, unless we want to give up that power, does not have to obey the same rules that a non-charter city does. And our charter is neutral on this, and I want to establish that again for the record. But are those elements that I mentioned, do they have force of law?
Just to clarify one element, the ordinance would be held in abeyance if certain studies were not completed.
This, this language here on page five, if the city fails to perform any of the enhancements required in this section, the living wage provisions of this ordinance shall be suspended. That's what I was talking about.
Oh, there, that would, there's...
That has the force of law.
You should have a corrected copy in front of you of the ordinance, right?
Okay, all right. So, so if it, it would be held in abeyance if we hadn't launched that?
I should take a, right. I should take a look at the clerk's copy.
Okay. We'll make sure. But the other ones all have the force of law?
Right, yes.
Okay. Secondly, I wanted to talk about some of the content and process of this, and I really appreciate that we are here right after we talked about Grand Avenue, because this is a council, and this is a city, that asks itself who we are. And I would say that we are a city... And I would say that we are a city that refuses to take wedge issues to divide us on economic issues such as some are proposing here today. We are a city and a council and a mayor that has very clearly stepped up, not just for workers but for business, in Alameda Corridor, Hollywood and Vine, the LA Live, the Grand Avenue today. Anybody who would claim, who could actually stand here and say that we are an anti-business or a job-killing entity simply is not looking at the record. We have, I think, I remember at the Chamber of Commerce dinner, there was the incoming chair, who's a friend and was a great part of this process, said, "You know, organized labor is called organized because it's organized, it's time to have business get organized as well." I respectfully have to say that it wasn't a very organized process here, that when we have folks who say, "We are here to be able to speak on behalf of the business community," but they go back to their own board and can't deliver what we talked about, that means that we all wasted a lot of time together. And I'm sorry to express it like that, but I was disappointed by that. It would have been fine, and we can always agree to disagree, but let's just say that upfront, that this is something that fundamentally will never be able to come together and craft something different, because what I'm hearing is it comes back each time to that fundamental principle on the living wage. And we can agree to disagree, a poll shows the voters of this city, 75% of them agree with the action this body took. If you didn't poll just voters, but residents of LA, we'd be well north of 80%. And I think plenty of people, not all of us, but plenty of people in this room on both sides would have rather just gone to the ballot and played that out. But don't blame us for the timeline. We shouldn't be blamed for a timeline that was imposed by paid signature gatherers putting something on the ballot because you didn't like what the elected representatives of this city passed and the mayor signed into. That was the timeline that pushed us up against that. And as a favor, because the business community who we do work well with came to us and said, "Please, look at something where we can rescind this," we did that in good faith. And we rescinded it because you asked for it, not because we didn't want to go to an election. And I think that's very important for us to remember here on the ballot. I'm over, and I'll press my button and continue in a little bit. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Madam President, if I could just clarify, the ordinance before council and that the clerk has does not have that section that was referenced by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Hold my time, but Michael Collins, come on up, please, too. Michael, explain the airport hospitality enhancement zone from your perspective. Identify yourself and who...
While this issue is contested by some of our own members, there are parts that are not, in my opinion, contestable. And that is that about a year ago, the Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee said, "How can we get involved in enhancing the business out of the LAX hotels?" And the reason that that was asked for was that this is the largest concentration of hotel rooms in the city, with the highest occupancy rates but the lowest room rates. Something is structurally wrong. We went back and did a number of examinations, not the least of which was a study with meeting planners, and it was clear that there were opportunities for that part of the world to address that structural flaw. And they contained basically two areas. One, something that would spark new meetings and conventions at a higher rate, and that would be a conference facility, and we examined that. What we found was that in the absence of a environment, a context, if you will, of streetscapes, landscapes, retail, entertainment, and dining, that that alone wouldn't work. What was needed, we suggested, was a combination of both the conference center and a larger development plan around the area. What is being considered here addresses both of those concerns. And for that, we think there is opportunity to look to the fact that if we are optimistic and pressed on with what's in front of you today, that we might have an opportunity to fix something structurally wrong that currently, as of this moment, has not been addressed.
How much of our city's bed tax comes from the corridor?
About 26%.
Would you, City Attorney, please repeat again, real quickly, the differences, just summarize them?
The principal difference are the totality of the enhancement. The original ordinance was a one-way mandate requiring hotels in this corridor to play, pay a living wage. The new ordinance creates an airport hospitality enhancement zone within which not only is there a phased implementation of a living wage, it's also subject significantly to a one-year waiver process. And then the city is investing resources in the area, there's a significant economic enhancement package.
Colleagues, this is an easy one for me, it's as easy as the Grand Avenue project was. When Jose Uizar and Ed Reyes got on the picket line and got themselves arrested, they demonstrated, from a council perspective, their commitment to the living wage. We're talking about $9.39 or $10.64. When the four-point Sheridan was purchased, the first thing the new owner did was raise everybody's wage to the living wage, and those who were making more than that, he gave them a 10% increase. And I asked him why. He said, "Well, it's going to cost me at least $1 million to my bottom line by bringing everybody up, all boats together." And he said, "It's good for business, because if you take care of your workers so that they have one job and they can go home at night and be with their spouses and their children, they're going to be more productive, more positive, and create an energy with the tourists or with whomever else is using the hotel that's positive. The people who collect the tips should get their tips." But we put three ordinances together, two of them we passed, one ended up on the ballot. When it ended up in the ballot, everybody got together in a room. Business community didn't want to spend $5 to $7 million in fighting it, the labor people didn't think it made sense to fight it, the mayor wanted to work it out and create a compromise and find a way to do it. It was taken off the ballot. But never through any of those discussions did anybody clearly bring up why $9.39 or $10.64 doesn't work, when a good businessman who has taken over the hotel, has 44 other hotels, believed it's good for business. Frankly, when I first was running as a candidate for office, I met with the Gateway Group, and they're in my district, and I serve them as I do everybody else in the 11th District. And Grant Cooley from Hilton suggested a conference center. That's when the idea first went in my mind to make the Century Corridor a place of destination, not just a transfer place. So, I got excited about how could the city work with the private sector in a partnership to make it a place to go, so that the hotels could raise their rates, incredibly keep themselves full, and keep a good margin of profit. Inherent in all of this is if it's good for business, it should also be good for the worker. If it's good for the worker, it should also be good for business. That's my philosophy. I saw the way we went forward with the Grand, we actually are willing to even put more energy out there to see that this particular area gets done. It is not going to hurt the business in the corridor, folks, it's actually going to make your workers more productive, and it's going to give everybody the dignity that they should get if they're in the business community. All boats can rise together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would just like, is the CLA here? Wait. Here, I just need to ask you a couple of questions. When we use the term in the second motion that deals with airport hospitality enhancement zone, is that similar to a CRA or an enterprise zone?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Where would the funds come from? Would it be identical to those zones? Would we be dealing with tax increments, or how would that be funded?
Well, it wouldn't be a redevelopment area zone. It would be similar to, I suppose, a BID or an economic advancement zone that would, you know, again, depending upon the nature of the boundaries and other things, it could be eligible for federal estate grants, for example, for economic development, or it could be taxes generated within the area from the businesses, etc.
Hold my time. But I mean, as it's written now, do we know where the funds are coming from?
No, that has yet to be determined.
Okay, so, we basically would be implementing something that could actually be general fund-supported?
Again, that has yet to be determined on how it would be funded.
Okay. But again, if there are no federal funds that we know of, and it's not a CRA area, it's not those kinds of things, that we automatically have resources available?
That's right, there is no automatic funding source that would be identified.
One thing I was wondering also, when we were discussing this before, the city clerk was here, do you have any personal knowledge of what was actually on the referendum petition? What was the wording? What was it that they were asking people to sign up for?
I'm sorry, I do not, I did not see that.
Yeah, do you have that?
I'm ready for the City Attorney's Office. The referendum petition just contains the actual full text of the ordinance underneath the names of the proponents and the title saying "referendum against" a particular ordinance.
Okay, so, the living wage one was actually the petition?
That's right.
Okay, and so, we articulated earlier what was living wage two, what was the essence of one?
The essence of one was a one-way requirement, meaning there was no participation, the city investment in the zone was not present. It was just a one-way regulation of hotels in the Century Corridor to pay a living wage to certain hotel workers.
Okay, so, the essence was it was living wage without all the maybe bails and whistles and living wage two?
Right. Well, I characterize them differently.
Okay, why don't you characterize it then?
The second, the second ordinance provides for investment, it defines a zone, it provides for investment into the zone, it changes some of the terms of the living wage in that...
I understand the second one, I'm just talking about the first one...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was narrowly defined, living wage without all the things you mentioned earlier...
Right, correct.
When you articulated what was living wage two.
Right.
So, a person signing that petition, our expectation is that they would not be signing it because there was no hospitality zone, they wouldn't be signing it because there was not a quarantine area, they wouldn't be signing it because of the other issues that are in living wage two. Is that what we...
Correct, the second ordinance has...
I know, I'm saying, but the first one, the petition, I'm getting to...
Yes.
What they would sign it was not what was missing...
Whether the city should require payment of the living wage in the corridor.
The city should be imposing the living wage.
Right.
Okay, so, the issue was they weren't signing for what's missing, what was missing or what was later put into living wage two, they were signing it on the text of the city imposing living wage.
Well, we don't, we can't go to their intent, but...
Well, I mean, but that's what it said, I mean, if I understand.
It's shall this ordinance be adopted, so, and it sets forth the text, and that's what a voter has to, you know, make a decision.
But if we just went on a literal interpretation of what's on the petition, it basically identified the living wage and whether the person signing it supported it or didn't support it, it didn't go into what may have been thought of later as the enhancement.
The petition merely sets forth the proposed ordinance for enactment pursuant to a vote.
Councilmember, I'd just like to add, the petition doesn't tell you very much, because it just has the ordinance in it. It is distinctly possible, and indeed, I would have to say likely, that the signature gatherers augmented what was in the petition. So, you don't know what they said or what was in the mind of anybody who signed it. And part of that could have been about what was missing, including, for example, quarantine language, limiting this body's future ability to enact living wage ordinances, which was identified as the number-one argument of the Chamber of Commerce, one of the proponents of the referendum. And the only thing that I would add, there was submitted, even though we never got there, there was submitted to the city clerk, a ballot argument, had there been a referendum in May, a ballot argument from the proponents of the referendum, and we consulted that in putting together the elements of this ordinance.
But what you said was speculation as to what you perceived might have been said. Is the essence of the referendum, the written word and what was signed...
No, I don't believe that it is. The essence of the referendum is opposition to the ordinance that was initially enacted, and part of that opposition, at least from the Chamber of Commerce, for example...
When somebody signed it, I'm just getting to the point of the signing of the petition, do we rely on their understanding of the words on the petition?
No, and that's what I'm saying. No court would say, you only look at what is in that petition to decide what motivated people in signing it, because we know that the arguments against this go beyond the wording of the ordinance. Specifically, we know that a major contention of the Chamber of Commerce was that a problem with the predecessor ordinance was it did not include quarantine language that would limit the future enactment of living wage.
But I'm not talking about the chambers' opposition, I'm talking about the people who signed it, the 100,000 people.
Yes, and at bottom, it's all speculation about what motivated those folks, so you have to look to other sources. And that includes what the proponents said, what they said both in public and in private, and it includes the ballot argument that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, so, if we were going to go to court and defend ourselves, you're saying we'd have to go out and find people and find the individual signatures and say, "What was your intent in signing it?" Or would we rely on the fact that the written word was clearly defined and the person signed it, and that's their signature and their registered...
It would be neither. You can't go out and ask people after the fact why they signed it or didn't sign it, because people's perceptions change, so that's not a reliable source of what was the reason that referendum was being circulated and signed. But second, you would not be confined just to what is on the petition in determining, in a court determining, what were the contentions of the referendum proponents.
Okay, but what we do have, is I guess they call it the best evidence, is we have 100,000 signatures that signed the document that laid out living wage one, and they said they were in opposition of that.
Well, what they said was they wanted that ordinance to go to a vote of the people. So, it's conceivable that some of them actually supported it, but believe that it should go to a vote of the people.
Okay, so, in them saying it goes to the vote of the people, the fact that the city repealed it, then this is where the substantive issue comes back as to whether the second ordinance is substantially different.
The council and the city could not enact an ordinance that is essentially the same as the one that those 100,000 signators wanted to go to the ballot, so it has to be essentially different from the predecessor.
As Mr. Smith asked you earlier, when you say, "What is the rush?", is it our intent that if what's been said today, that if we move forward as currently described and vote this in, there's going to be a lawsuit, and that's a better course of action for the city than to attempt to resolve it so that we have one of those kumbaya parties just like we did with Grand Street? Or is that the course we're looking to go?
I think it's difficult to say whether there will be a lawsuit filed. As you know, there have been legal arguments presented to this body by some of the proponents of the referendum, so that's a distinct possibility. I should say that even if the council and the mayor had decided to place this on a referendum, there still might have been litigation. Even if there had never been a referendum, there still might have been litigation about this ordinance.
But I mean, where we are today is the referendum is, or the signatures caused a decision to take it off the ballot, and now we have a second ordinance, which now the people who initiated the petition are saying it's not substantially different. The expectation is, if they're people of their word, they're going to follow through, and as they said, in looking at litigation. So, I'm just saying, is that the course we want to go in as it relates to moving forward, as opposed to do we lose anything in the sense of going back and trying to resolve their issues, or is the living wage issue beyond resolving?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, what they have said today is not necessarily what they will choose to do. As you know, in any course of litigation, you make a cost-benefit analysis, and it is my hope and my belief that when they review how different this ordinance is from its predecessor, they might conclude, and should conclude, that it's not worth the expenditure that they would have to incur to pursue litigation. That's number one. And number two, there's nothing that's written in concrete.
I have one question.
Once this ordinance takes effect, the council still has the opportunity to address other issues it chooses to in this ordinance or any other.
Okay, let me ask you, have you read their letter that they presented today from their attorney?
I was not given a copy of that, I'm sorry, no, sorry, I haven't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. If you'd like to speak again, please press your button.
All right.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The state and federal minimum wage, there's a scale, and that's adjusted. Do you know how the prevailing wage, the living wage is adjusted, what form are they use for living wage?
Yeah, it's, one year from the effective date, it will be adjusted according to certain indexes that are described in the ordinance.
Well, we have a living wage for businesses doing activity with the city of Los Angeles. There's already a living wage ordinance.
Right, and that...
Is this following those same guidelines on the adjustments?
I think we, right. Adrian, can I answer that? I believe...
Well, the city's current living wage that's on the books right now...
Well, the city's current living wage that's on the books right now applies to contracts with the city.
Correct. Now, that living wage is the same living wage as being proposed for the hotel workers in the Century Corridor.
As far as the mechanism for adjustment?
Yeah, as far as the adjustment goes, yes. And the ultimate rate, yes. But this ordinance that's in front of you right now sets out a different process to get there. There are, it's an incremental application of the living wage. So, when the ordinance is effective, then the rate will be 825 with benefits, 950 without benefits. Then on July 1st, they'll be paid, the workers will get a wage in their entirety. And then on January 1st, 2008, they'll get their first adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index. That's different.
That's my question. On the living wage that is paid to workers with businesses that do business with the city, is that adjusted annually?
Yes, they're tied to the Consumer Price Index as well.
Okay, and what we're talking about now is the federal and state minimum wage has been increased. And there's a standard that they have for federal and state compliance. And there's a ladder, and I don't know the exact numbers, but it was recently approved.
Right.
How far is that spread from what we're talking about, the first component for the living wage for the hotel workers? Hold my time, please.
I don't have the numbers in front of me of the recently enacted minimum, I'm sorry, state minimum wage, but.
I know it has gone.
We can look that up for you.
I'm trying to see the spread, what the spread is between what's being proposed in the steps here and what the steps are in the federal and state increase in the wage, minimum wage.
I'm pretty sure it's somewhere around 725, so maybe about $2, but that's a guesstimate. I'd have to look it up to get the precise numbers.
And you say it changes annually?
It's adjusted annually if there are any adjustments in the index that we look to to set the new rates. So, maybe there's no adjustment. But every year, that would have to be consulted. And then, if there are any adjustments, the living wage would be adjusted accordingly.
So, whatever the living wage would be for those vendors doing business with the city, the same would apply to those individuals in this particular hotel industry?
I think the C O's office also consults a Consumer Price Index to adjust that city contract living wage. I'd have to double-check as to whether it's the same index.
And the other issue during the discussions, and I was not part of those discussions, the living wage that's now required for businesses doing activities with the city was established for those businesses a number of years ago. And now, the issue that some businesses have brought to my attention is that now it goes into the private sector, businesses not doing business directly with the city of Los Angeles, that they're now going to become a part of that. And the slippery slope, was it ever discussed during the negotiations that the slippery slope, now starting with the Century Hotels, will spread to other industries throughout the city of Los Angeles? Was that ever discussed at the table?
Yes, Councilmember Zine, it was discussed because it was a primary concern of the Chamber of Commerce. And that's why what I've been referring to in shorthand as quarantine language, that sets up procedural and substantive requirements for any future consideration of living wage, was drafted, agreed upon, and incorporated in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
One more question. And when the original living wage was presented, was there any condition that it would not apply to any businesses outside those businesses doing business with the city of Los Angeles? Was there any quarantine or something similar?
There's no explicit quarantine language as there is in this current ordinance, in that city contract living wage ordinance. It just sets out that the only businesses affected would be those who are doing business with the city. So, in the definitions, it's limited in its reach.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Colleagues, again, I think we've heard a good discussion here today. It's clear that this new ordinance is substantially different from the first one. I see 14 different items in this ordinance that are absolutely completely different than what we had in the first. And again, it's very disappointing to me, colleagues, to stand here today and witness what I think is an absolute betrayal of our trust and our faith from the business community and from the hotel owners. We should have never rescinded the first ordinance. We should have let them take this to the ballot, and I think we would have overwhelmingly had the support of the voters of Los Angeles to pay these workers a living decent wage that came with respect and dignity. But we rescinded that ordinance only because we were up against a deadline in terms of taking it off the ballot. And we did that for the business community. We did that for the hotel owners. And we sat around the table and addressed their concerns. They wanted to make sure we didn't do this again without a process. That's in this ordinance. They wanted to make sure that we phased in this living wage. I wanted to have it start last November. We did that. And they wanted to make sure that we would partner with them to improve that corridor and to prove that infrastructure, to give them business incentives and tax breaks. We were giving them a different power rate. We did all that in this ordinance. So, to have them today stand here and threaten the sewers is just really an abomination. And I implore the business community, and I call on the business community. I implore you to not tie this up in litigation and cost both of us millions of dollars in outside law and attorney fees. Save your money and pay your hotel workers what they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And tough to follow that, Shannon, so. I'll just, yeah, I know we have two other speakers, and I will be a little bit briefer here. I just wanted to address a couple of things on the content as well. I think it's okay, I just want to say this before we close, that it's okay to disagree. And I want the business community and labor and the community to hear this. It's the mark of a mature city if we figure out a way that we can agree to disagree that respects the relationships we have and moves forward. Sometimes says, we have a difference of opinion, but it's okay, we can move on from that. I feel a little bit that we had a process here in which the disagreements led first to a scorched earth strategy. Call this council anti-business. Say that we're job killers. Come after us in each and every way, and the mayor, and say things that just weren't actually true. Many of us spent a lot of time reaching out directly. I remember being at the board retreat for the Chamber of Commerce and just being as straight a shooter as I could. And it's okay sometimes for us to be on different parts of issues because most times we are together as a city because of the hard work that labor and business community and this city council and others have done to find the sort of paradigm we just saw with Grand Avenue and that we've seen in countless other examples. But the disagreement led to first the scorched earth strategy, then it led to a take this off the ballot. We worked together to do that, but then, once that was done, well, we don't like what's there, and we still fundamentally disagree, so we can't stand with you. I want us not to waste any of each other's times because we have too many good things that we have to do in this city. But when we spend those sort of hours with the expectation that people can deliver or are speaking on behalf of hotels, the business community, I think it's very important for us to realize where those roads do diverge and to move on from them. Certainly, there are many people in this room who would have gone towards an election and would have done that happily on both sides. And that might have been a truer and more straightforward, more honest articulation of where this city is really at, so we can understand that. Because this is a city that I do think does believe fundamentally in workers and in business. And I know we've said that so many times in here, it becomes almost a throwaway phrase, but I hate the idea that we've put a lot of good things here on the table for business and still feel like there's no change because there's something there for the workers that is ideologically opposed. When we look at, in the last week, in this council alone, in the last week, colleagues, we voted on more than $110 million to support business investment in the city through two projects, one in Chinatown and one here in Grand Avenue. And that's just one week's worth. When we look at, and you can look at the agenda today and for the last week, some of the things that we've done, for us to be caught up and for us to be this divided and for the wedges to continually been driven in in very personal ways in some cases, after a lot of good people kind of put their efforts forward, and there wasn't even much acknowledgement of those efforts that the mayor put forward, that members of this council put forward, and four different council members that were part of negotiations heard very clearly that we were headed in the right direction, that we were very close, there was no acknowledgement of that in the end. In fact, it was just that we fundamentally disagree. One business group, I don't blame VICA, I don't blame CCA, I don't blame United Chambers, I don't blame all the voices that weren't at the table because there was a voice at the table that was supposed to be speaking and claimed that it was speaking on behalf of business. And I feel like there's been a 180 switch on that. We are a city that believes in togetherness. And this is the last plea that I make in closing to the business community, to our chamber, to figure out what brings us together and to lead with your own groups, to lead back to say, you know, this is substantive. What they are talking about doing in a business district might mean that what we've seen emerge in South Park could happen along the Century Corridor. What's emerged in Hollywood and which is about to emerge in Chinatown might occur in our gateway community. And then we could all be proud of what we delivered. You can look back in the business community and say to your own constituents three years from now, we did the right thing. And look at how much more profitable these hotels are, look how much more beautiful this area is, look at what visitors see when they come in. But I feel like everybody is being a little short-sighted here today instead of figuring out a way that we can lift up the life of these workers, who when it comes down to it, 75% of people not only supported us that vote, and as I said, well north of probably 80% of this city would support us if you just asked all Angelenos, and they elected this council because they believe in certain things. It is an articulation of what they want to see in this city. And some people can be on the other side of those issues sometimes, and that's okay. You don't have to change that opinion. But it's important to know the city that you live in, the mayor that represents you, the council that represents you. And trust me, we get the biggest check on our jobs every single time because in four years from now, if we're way out of touch with the people who elected us, we won't get reelected. But I believe that we are in touch, that we do listen, that our door has continuously been open, not only to majority votes and the most applause, but to people who have differences of opinions with us. But if we can't figure out a mature way to take blame when we can't deliver what we said we would or to thank people for the effort that they've put in, it closes those doors in the future. But I want to thank the people who have stuck to this. And those who aren't just here for ideology but are here for survival, the workers, the very workers who are doing the difficult work that every single day, when they go home and they have to figure out how to pay their medical bills, and even if this living wage gets passed, it's not going to be a lot easier for them in their lives, but it will be a little bit more easy for them. Maybe one more hospital visit can be paid for without going into debt. Maybe they can continue to meet the rent and eat a little bit better. Those are the folks who this is not just about ideology, it's about their very survival.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith.
I'm not going to belabor the point. I'm going to ask just a couple quick questions, two questions. First of all, as we take money from the general fund for street improvements, or as Mr. Parks pointed out, there are some things we're not even sure where the money's coming from yet, therefore, read that general fund. As we take money from the general fund and give it to the benefit of a few people, how does that get us around the requirement of not giving money as a public gift to a private person? When we looked at the Grand Project, when we looked at Staples, when we looked at Hollywood Highland, all of those were loans or advances to be repaid over time. This is a gift of public funds for private benefit. How do we get around that charter problem?
Here, there's a public benefit. These are, first of all, it's through street improvements, the identification of a convention center. As you know, the city now operates a convention center. The types of investment that the city is making stimulates the local economy, stimulates the corridor, and is a strategic investment of the city in order to create that kind of economic development. And there's undoubtedly a public purpose to that.
Okay, but we're doing it in a zone that we're identifying, not everywhere in the city, right? Just in this zone?
Right, and the city has laid out a foundation for identifying that zone as this.
But that zone doesn't qualify under federal law, doesn't qualify under state law. We're making this up, and then we're saying we can apply public funds to benefit that zone. So, I could say, I want the horsekeeping zone in Chatsworth to get public benefits. Let's call it a zone, and then we can give it money. Is that the legal process we're establishing now? Because we don't have that now. That's not part of our public process.
This is a new type of zone. As you point out, it's not a CRA zone or a bid, but that doesn't.
We made it up to meet our needs.
Well, it's perfectly within the purview and the parameters of the council's legislative authority to do so.
Okay, so maybe I'll bring a horsekeeping zone, and then I can get money for horses or skateboarding zone for skateboarders.
You need a rational basis.
What's, oh, all right. Don't step over that line, okay? Because you've got pretty weak legs on this one. Secondly, can you give me three things that are substantially different, other than a promise to do something, which is loaded in this thing, is promises to do things, no guarantees, and three things that are substantially different that don't include public general fund enhancements? What's different between one and two, three things?
There's the one-year waiver requirement. In other words, a hotel who wants sort of a waiver of the application of the living wage, there's a process that they can go through with the controller to accomplish that.
That's a one-year old, though.
There's a, pardon me?
It's a one-year old?
One year, but it can be renewed. There is the phased implementation, the previous living wage was immediately effective. This takes effect, sorry, the full living wage is paid after six months, and then a cost of living adjustment is made after a year.
But we already identified under certain pre-existing legal cases that could be problematic.
It sets up a process for future regulation of the living wage, and the ordinance is suspended or the application of the living wage is suspended pending the city's completion of studies, and a certain timeframe is given for that.
Okay, that's pretty weak arguments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Gruel? She's a first-timer.
Sorry, Mr. Wesson. I will be brief, because I want to, I'd stand in support of this ordinance today, and I think you've heard, we all dealt in good faith. I got to spend some fun time with you, Tom, on a Sunday and others, which was to try to address concerns that had been raised by both the business community and the hotel industry. In particular, as you indicated, the quarantine language, which I thought was a legitimate issue that we needed to discuss here at the same time. But, you know, the message we want to send today is we can be business-friendly. And as someone who, with my colleague Eric Garcetti, was the, you know, individuals who crafted our business tax reform, we can be business-friendly and worker-friendly at the same time. We think that that balance can be met, and that's why we sat down and had those negotiations. I think that the issues that Mr. Smith brought up, you know, in fact, Greg, I was going to call you George, I don't know why, but George, also known as Greg. We sat a week ago, or two weeks ago, with the mayor and various economists who talked about what we needed to do to make Los Angeles a destination point. Particularly, one of the speakers talked about the fact that destination points in Los Angeles would bring us greater TOT dollars, which would help us invest, and that there was an opportunity for us here. And the three places that he mentioned that were key to the future of destination for our issue of tourism, as Ms. Hahn mentioned, that this is really in our last discussion on Grand Avenue, indicated that downtown, Hollywood, and LAX, three places that an investment, a public investment, would be helpful, which would ultimately bring money back to the city, same as Grand Avenue and others, that that investment in the Century Corridor, the ability for us to attract tourism, attract businesses, attract people who will go into those hotels by the things that you have mentioned, will in fact, over time, be an economic benefit for the city and not just for the hotel owners. But increased individuals who go to those hotels will in fact increase the dollars that we receive under the TOT. They'll increase sales tax that if they go to those restaurants and so forth in that area. And so, I think that this ordinance has changed from its original iteration. There's been a lot of work and time put into it and a lot of input from others who may not agree now about the end result. But I think there was a good-faith effort by this council and this mayor and the city attorney's office to address the concerns that they raised. And so, that is why I'm supporting the ordinance that I feel really reaches that balance between being business-friendly and worker-friendly at the same time. Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Parks to close.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me ask, three minutes? Okay, let me ask a couple of questions for the city attorney. When we use the term quarantine, what does that mean legally or in this document?
Well, the ordinance doesn't actually use the word quarantine.
I mean, we keep referring to it.
What it means is that. What it means is that if this, what the ordinance does is if the city wishes to do future living wage enhancements applicable to business, that the city would have to go through certain steps and studies in order to, before doing so.
Is that similar to what we said when we put living wage on just government or city contracts, that we were going to limit it just to...
No, there was no language to that effect.
My understanding is that we said at the time it was limited only to...
Well, by its terms it was. So in other words, just as by this ordinance's own terms, even without that language, it only requires, it only sets up the enhancement zone and requires a city's, you know, investment of resources and a payment of the living wage in this corridor.
So we could be in the same position several years from now that eight votes could change the quarantine? Because we're doing this without...
This ordinance, like any other, I mean, not like any other, because different ordinances sometimes have different vote requirements, but this ordinance can be amended by a majority of the city council.
The other thing, if this goes through, as people are projecting that there may be a lawsuit, and it's found that the living wage portion of it is invalid, where does that leave the rest of the ordinance?
The, if the living wage is found invalid, then the enhancements are also suspended.
Okay. Is it your view, the way the ordinance is written, that the enhancements are mandatory?
Some of, well, some of the enhancements have timeframes for the city's completion, but the ordinance does not require the suspension of the payment of the living wage pending the city's completion of those. It does, however, require that the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the payment of the living wage be suspended if the city fails to complete certain studies.
But I mean, if going to reverse, the issues that we called the enhancements, is it your view today, if this ordinance passed, that it's mandatory that we implement them, irrespective of the living wage?
Yeah. The ordinance makes these as obligations by the city, and if we didn't fulfill those obligations, we would be, you know, somebody could seek an order compelling us to complete them.
I didn't quite hear that.
The ordinance creates obligations by the city, so if the city fails to perform them, then frankly, we could be subject to, we could be ordered to comply or to...
So we're obligated to complete the enhancement?
Right.
Okay. Let me ask, Tom, one thing I asked you earlier about, what the petition, and just as I get older, my memory fades, but I wanted to get a copy of it. When you said that people were signed it with the right to go to, to have it go to the ballot, the actual title of the referendum is Referendum Against Ordinance Number 178082 Passed by the City Council. And then when the city clerk certified it, their title was Certification of Sufficiency Referendum Petition to Repeal Ordinance Number. So it did appear that, at least on the title, that people were signing it with an idea of repealing, not just to take it to a vote. That's at least what we have from the city clerk.
Sure, that's the wording of the petition, but the legal effect of it is to put it on the ballot. So I understand what you're saying. I think it's fair that someone could read that and say that.
Because I was trying to get very parochial and say what was on the petition that they saw, and it says that it's a referendum against the ordinance.
Sure. But my point earlier was still that you could be against the ordinance because of what's not in it, as well as what's in it.
But again, we can speculate, but I'm saying what was they read is very clear, that it was for the repeal. But let me just, a couple of comments, colleagues, in dealing with this issue, and I think that whether we support or don't support living wage, one way or the other, the one thing I have a concern about is I think that we're using the wrong tool or method to go about it. I think the fact that we're using the legislative process to impose these wages on private industry, in my judgment, takes us away from what we had agreed, or what I believe the council's intent when they imposed living wage years ago on government contracts. The other issue, we use references such as Grand Street, Marlton Square, Chesterfield, and LA Live. The one thing we're missing is that they all have something called tax increment because they're part of a CRA area, where this project doesn't. It is unclear where that sustained resource will come from, other than the general fund. Even today, as we're asked to vote on it, we don't know where those funds will be forthcoming. The issue also is that if we talk about, as I mentioned earlier, the quarantine, that quarantine is just a vote, one more vote away as to where and how we can expand it. And what I've heard from the business community, if we can do this with the hotels, what about the restaurants and the other activities and businesses in that general area or anyplace else? And if we're looking for a nexus study, the next one will be if we pave the streets and we fix the sewers, can we impact any business in the city of LA? Because that's a pretty good nexus, if we provide people the ability to get to that business or access to it. So although, again, in a sense, certainly supportive of people getting paid the highest they can and all those benefits, the issues, I just think this is the wrong tool to use.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garc, Mr. Garc, okay, Garcetti, you're sitting in Mr. Cardenas' seat.
Mr. Cardenas, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Just very briefly, I wanted to add two amendments. I assure you, these are non-controversial, colleagues. On the workforce development page on number three in section 2A, the second sentence, which says training will occur at a location within the airport hospitality enhancement zone, I would add or within close proximity, only because there's some educational institutions in the Community College District that are a little further than that one mile that was in there, that may be appropriate places. Secondly, in B, in that same section of two, workforce development, we put LA Unified School District Adult Education Division, and I would add, or the Los Angeles Community College District. Again, some of our ESL classes are well taught there. If there's no objection, I assume that'll be accepted as friendly before the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
You okay, Greg? Yeah?
Do you need a second on that? Yes, please?
No, no, it's a friendly amendment.
All right, are we ready to call the question? Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
On the vote.
On the vote.
Greg, hit the green button.
Madam Clerk, please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes, and that ordinance will go over for one week.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Just as a point of information for some of our friends that came down here today on both sides of the issues, because it wasn't a unanimous vote, it goes over one week, and then it just requires a simple majority. An ordinance has to be unanimous the first time. So it'll come back next week, but generally without any discussion, and that'll just be a majority vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 23, and that was called special by council member Parks.
Mr. Parks?
On that item, we've gotten the information, I can move on.
All right, he has received the information that he needed. We no longer need to hear that item. Next item, next.
Madam President, a vote is needed on that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you?
A vote is needed on that.
Okay. All right, would you please open the roll? This is item 23. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item number 30, and that was called special by council member Hahn.
Ms. Hahn?
Wait on the desk for a moment.
All right, we'll hold that item on the desk for just a moment.
Next item then is item 34, and that was called special by council member Parks. An amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Parks, this is item 34.
34. We just have an amending motion to expand the scope of work for the South Los Angeles transportation study, and we added some area for CD 11, so that most of the city areas south of the Santa Monica Freeway is included. So that motion has been circulated, and we'd just like to amend the original motion.
Thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Grule, Ms. Grule.
Just a quick question, Mr. Parks, on that, because I don't think the 150,000 will cover all of that, and there's some other plans. So is the idea they'll initially go to a core area and then expand it?
I think the idea was, first of all, for them to be aware of the eight or 10 studies that are going on by MTA and others, so that they can see what work is being done along the Expo Line, and then from there, move from that point to determine what is the scope. And forewarn you, we may be coming to you and saying, we may need a little Prop C or A money to continue the study.
Can we add just a friendly amendment, that they come back, and I don't know if we included this in our report before, in two months or something?
Give us some update?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So 90 days?
We'd hope that within 90 days, they'd have some idea to tell us where they are.
Okay. 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grule.
That would be a friendly amendment.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Madam President, a vote is needed on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Next item, Madam President, there is a special one motion that has been presented and distributed to the council members, and is presented by the council member Garcetti, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posing of today's agenda has been determined that a quorum of council members will not be available for the council meeting Tuesday, February 20th. Immediate action is required in order to alert the general public and city staff as soon as possible about the cancellation of that meeting. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just, oh, this is on the...
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, we have to vote on the findings first. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Please proceed.
Not canceled yet. Colleagues, on the 20th, we will be having a lobbying day in which many of us are going up to Sacramento. We often hear that we're not in Sacramento enough, and I know that there are a number of us who want to go up. The mayor will be up there as well to lobby on some of the city priorities. And with that in mind, we thought it was best to cancel council to allow the maximum number of members to be up there to interface with our legislative counterparts in the Assembly and the Senate. So if there are things that you would specifically like to lobby on, please let us know. We'll try to coordinate and help set up some of those meetings and work with the mayor's office on that. I know a number of you are already coming up, but please let us know, and we will have council, we will not have council because we will be working up there in Sacramento. So I ask for your support on that. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, before council votes on that, can the clerk be instructed for the public hearing items, to schedule those for February 27th?
Yes. Clerk, to be in contact with any of those folks that are publicly noticed to come for their items, and let them know when those items will be rescheduled. Thank you.
Is this item 30?
No.
Oh.
Yes, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, next item, please.
Next item, Madam President, item number 30 was called special by council member Hahn.
You know, without objection, I'd like to continue this till tomorrow. I need to get a couple more facts before I bring it to the full council.
Okay. So any objection to that? There's no objection. We'll go ahead and continue that. All right.
And, Mr. President, there is a speaker card on several items, and they have been previously adopted by council. Do you wish to reconsider those?
Yes, I said we would reconsider. I believe it was 39 and 43, because we didn't have the phone working out in Van Nuys. We'll be going to closed session very shortly, we'll take them, all right, we'll take them right after, we've got to move to do that right after closed session. So if we're going to closed session, and for any folks out in Van Nuys who asked, we'll come back on those two items. Thank you. Yes, sir?
You heard this matter last night in Budget and Finance without a closed session. Is there any need to go into closed session?
We have had a couple of requests from two different council members. There was confirmation. I know those council members are willing to also do an open session, but in consultation with city attorney's office, there are some pending litigation matters related to this. But, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. On item number 48, just for clarification, this is council's consideration of a Board of Order and Power Commissioner's action regarding an amendment to an agreement with Kasha Petry, Simon, and McCarthy for continued outside counsel in a litigation matter. Today is the last day pursuant to Administrative Code Section 10.5 as to whether to approve or disapprove this action. If council wishes to go into closed session to discuss the underlying litigation aspects, that would be under Government Code Section 54956.9A.
All right. There's no objection, let's go ahead, and we'll take that up. We'll go into closed session in court with California state law. We'll come back, and we'll take up those two items that I mentioned before, 39 and 43, for public comment afterwards, and we can now go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you.[485.03]